We're not hot yet, okay. Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for May 23rd, 2017. We'll begin on the special order calendar, continue hearing items, item number one, 1289-80BZ, 298 West 231st Street, Manhattan.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Jeremiah Contravega for the applicant. I attended yesterday's review session and provided the board with a letter this morning regarding the video monitoring system. 24 Hour Fitness maintains 10 cameras throughout the interior of the facility. They're all functional. They cover the entrance and desk, front desk, stairs, retail locker, pools, spa, the weight area, the exercise studio.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
The training areas.
Thank you.
The general manager and the loss prevention risk management team have access to manage these recordings and cameras. They presently don't have a security guard in the parking lot, although it's very active during its business hours. 24 Hour Fitness has estimated 17,900 swipes per day, excuse me, per month at the location. Parking lot's completely fenced in and well lit. Full-time staff and as well as a number of personal trainers frequent the parking lot randomly throughout the normal course of the day and its business operations. They're not performing security functions, they're coming in and out of the facility.
Just to park their car, right?
Yeah, they're parking their car, they're walking, but they're in the parking lot. And it's a very active parking lot. We respectfully request that you consider eliminating the condition for a security guard based on all of these factors. We understand that the initial condition was adopted quite a few years ago when the area was a little bit different. There's been no criminal activity in the last two and a half years since 24 Hour Fitness has operated the facility except for one, vandal, act of vandalism against the general manager's car, and that car's there every day. Hopefully, that's something that the board can consider in potentially eliminating the requirement for a parking lot.
But there's, I thought in your earlier response, you said there was video monitoring. Is it of the parking lot?
No, the continuous video monitoring is the interior of the facility, entrance, the front desk.
So then why don't they have video monitoring of the parking lot if that's been a security issue? I mean, even the general manager's car, that's kind of frustrating, right? So what if they installed a video camera at the parking lot? So at least vandals are aware that they're under video surveillance, usually there's a sign that says video surveillance?
I certainly think a condition that requires a video camera being installed in the, monitoring in the parking lot.
No, not a condition, we do it now. All of these renewals, we do it now, right? So, because otherwise, like that condition, it's not complied with, right? So, does anybody have, want to say that?
How long will it take to install?
I don't know.
Not long.
I do not know.
You hook it up to the central system, you know, you hire somebody who's already, there you have a service that's handling the current system. Just call them up and you say you want to expand.
I just, I just don't know, Madam Chair and Commissioners, if the current system is just a hard-wired system versus some type of non-hardwired camera system, but I'm sure there are those types of cameras out there.
So why don't you find, well, let's not find out. Have it installed. I mean, that's, that's the way to deal with, if you want to remove a condition and there has been an incident, then it's not like the parking lot is completely free of vandals, right?
I understand.
So, and also, I, my understanding from the original application was that these are issues that happen when there's sort of less activity, right? And it's 24 Hour Fitness, but probably there're not a lot of people at 3:00 in the morning who are working out.
They're not open at 3:00 in the morning, but, but, but.
No, they're not, okay, so then.
Right, but, but the issue.
To that point, 20, so at 3:00 in the morning, there's nobody there.
But it's a locked gated fenced facility, right? And so, the only point I was trying to make was, there are a number of parking lots in the city of New York that don't require.
Right.
Parking guards and video monitoring equipment. And, and we've submitted today information that in two and a half years, there's been one incident. But I understand if, based on that, you believe that there should be some form of either video monitoring or a security guard.
What, what does everyone else think?
If I, if I understand what you're saying is that the parking lot is only open when the, the fitness center is in operation, rest of the time, it is locked. So there shouldn't be any vehicles parked there, and there shouldn't be any ways to get into that facility, right?
That's right, it should not be, that's, that's correct. When it's closed, there's gates that, that close that parking lot off.
Right, but that was.
It's a, it's a high-fenced, well-lit parking lot.
Right, but that was the condition in the original grant, that there was both the fencing and security, so maybe it had to do with when the lot is open during the hours of operation.
Could also be that it has a lot to do with the time this was.
Yeah, in the late night.
That's kind of what I'm.
Yeah.
I think the situation has changed where if we, I'm not going to be in a condition.
Okay.
It is a very bustling area. It's a very bustling area around here. So I have to, I have to agree with Mr. Contravega. It's, it's very busy here, and I, I think the conditions have definitely improved over time, and.
So that it's not necessary.
I don't think it's necessary because they close at 11:00 and 10:00 o'clock at night, and then on the weekends around 6:00 o'clock. It's, it's pretty bustling. It's not a quiet area here. It's right off of the commercial strip, it's a major commercial strip, 231st Street. And even 230th, which is the southern side, is also pretty, pretty major, a lot of car traffic though.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other comments on this? Any speakers on this one? Okay, then. So, so then I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, 6594BZ, 14402 Jewell Avenue, Queens. Is this adjournment request?
Good morning, Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of the applicant.
You requested three weeks more to submit, right?
Yes, please.
So if it was an end June submission. July 18th, is that a possibility?
For Jewell Avenue, uh, yeah, definitely.
Okay, so July 18th with a, the June 28th submission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, 20197BZ, 11902 Rockaway Boulevard, Queens.
Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, um, I think that the last, the comment we had was about the trash enclosure, that.
It was, we spoke to the operator, they said they could look into repainting it and stuccoing it, but as the board has seen, it's taken a very long time for us to get where we are and to complete all the work, the other work that the board's requested. So, I'm afraid that if they did try to address the issue with the trash enclosure, we'd be waiting until next winter. At the same time, they can look into it, but we would respectfully ask the board to close without it. It's just, there are a lot of communication issues behind the scenes, and that's what the board's not realizing, and so I think the applicant has done a good job in repainting, in fixing the fence, and fixing the curb cuts, and replenishing the landscaping, they painted, they planted two street trees, they repainted the parking lot. It's just, everything takes a very long time.
What, I don't understand, what's the communication? Aren't they the client?
They are. It just takes a while. Everything just takes a long time.
Does it go through the national?
Yes, it goes back, so.
So there's no local operator?
We can look into it, but, I'm sorry?
There's no local operator that's managing it, it has to get approval through the national?
There sort of is, but it just, everything takes a very long time to get approved for the work. So my point is, is that we can look into it, the application just may be here for another few months.
So my, my question though, is that's been a subject in every one of our past hearings, so why are we first looking into it?
Well, they did repair the doors on the trash enclosure, and I think that's what they thought the board wanted to see.
We actually said painting, painting and stuccoing. So, I don't understand, it seems like they didn't feel like it, so they didn't do it.
It's not that they didn't feel like, I think they were just so focused on doing everything else, that request just slipped through the cracks. I mean, they did make a lot of improvements.
Yeah, they made some improvements.
They planted two street trees, they fixed the curb.
But it was also, the hearing was adjourned four times.
It was, that's what I'm telling the board, yes. We're with you, we're struggling.
Is there representatives, I mean, you don't come with your clients normally, and probably should, so they understand how this works, right? If you came with your client to the next hearing, because it doesn't take long to stucco in the middle of the summer when the weather is perfect for doing this, right?
We can definitely ask them to do it. My point is that we may just be here for a few more months, but that's definitely something we can go back and ask them to do.
Okay. Are we still looking at elimination of the term? Because that's what they originally questioned.
Right, so why should we?
Right.
Right.
So, we'll go back to the client, we'll ask them to do it, and I'm sure they'll be happy to.
Would, would an alternative where we don't eliminate the term, and maybe perhaps put them on a shorter leash?
But then that's back for.
Okay, we would rather just go back, have a take a few more hours now and eliminate the term, I take back everything I did, I'm all, I'm happy to do it.
Also thinking about the resources of the board, and our calendar, and other things like this, like these.
Right, but I, I'm thinking of the resources as well, but the thing is, once we let them out there into the wild, they don't comply with things, and then it's in a state that it's not in a good state to start. We try to get it into a, at least a reasonable state to start, so going forward, we have a chance that for the duration of the, whatever it is, a term or not a term, because I don't know that we, it is a non-conforming use in an R3 too, right? So, yeah, I, I would prefer to see it than take care of the thing we've been asking for since November.
Isn't it now just a non-compliant use? Because now the use is allowed.
It's actually, yeah. It's just a, it's a overlay.
Oh, right.
That just has some non-compliance.
Correct, right, yeah.
From our previous.
Okay. I mean, it's kind of a downhill spiral when you can't get them to maintain their property when we're looking.
But we're focusing on the negative, look at all the.
All right, so I would like to try one more time, and let's just say, no excuses. So, we can give them enough time to actually do the work, not to ask them to do the work, tell them to do the work. So it's stucco and paint the enclosure, so that it looks presentable when you take a photograph of it to show that it's presentable. Okay. And we give them enough time, so, are there any speakers on this? Okay, so, what if they came back like August 15th? That's plenty of time, it's.
August 15th for.
All of July to do the work.
For a hearing?
For a hearing.
August 15th, okay.
Yeah. Okay, and really, you could submit the photos quite literally the day before, but otherwise, the submission schedule standard one is July 26th.
I just want to ask that, that your office will be available in August, I heard.
No, that's, that's.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'll be here.
Yeah.
I have no way.
I want to make sure that I know.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can't say you didn't try.
Item number four, 3000BZ, 465-469 West 165th Street, and 458-464 West 166th Street, Manhattan.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Frank Chaney, I'm with the law firm Rosenberg and Estes, representing the lesssee of the parking lot, New York Presbyterian Hospital. Was at the review session yesterday morning, and also watched the video in the afternoon, and so I have the board's comments, and with your permission, I could just go through them and respond. The first question, I think, and the main one seemed to be the question of whether all the spaces will fit within the lot boundaries based on the survey, and the comment was made that, that there's no comparison to the survey, and that the proposed plan should be superimposed on the survey. I went back and I looked at the survey and the site plan, that the lot dimensions on the site plan are either the same as the lot dimensions on the survey, or where they're different, the lot dimension on the survey is greater. The, the, the sum of the string courses for each block of parking spaces, including the width of the driveway, are all less than the lot frontage and, and side lot dimensions of the property, so it seems fairly clear that the spaces will all fit within the boundaries of the, of the property. I've reached out to the architect to either explain or to conform the places where there is a difference in the survey dimension and the site plan dimension, but they're, they're not significant, but I have not heard back from them yet on that. There was also the comment that the string courses should run from lot line to lot line, so we can add the distance between the parking space on the east and the parking space on the west to the fence, which will complete that.
Actually, it's both north, south, east, west.
Yes, 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 in all directions, yes. So we can do that, and then they'll run from lot line to lot line. Question was asked whether the property has been reposted and refenced, which it has not been. That also goes for the, there was a question as to whether any of the physical improvements have been made, and none of the improvements have been made yet. They were not made by the previous lesssee, and New York Presbyterian has been the lesssee of the property for less than two months, and have not made any of the improvements yet. We're kind of waiting to get the board's approval on the, the site plan and the proposed changes to the, to the property before undertaking those improvements, which we expect will take about two months to complete. The light shields, that includes the light shield, light shields have not been put in place yet. There was a comment that the photos submitted with the resubmission by New York Presbyterian are the same as the photos that were originally submitted. There have been no changes in the existing conditions on the streets of the properties surrounding the property, so the photos that were originally submitted are still, still represent the, the existing commission, conditions.
That comment was that a lot of duplicates were submitted, and so we're reviewing things that we've already seen, and so, you know, you look at photographs and you figure you see something new, but you're actually seeing something you already saw, so, yeah, it didn't help to resubmit things that were already submitted.
Okay. With regard to the photos, it was a comment that the board had asked for photos of the interior. We were responding to what, what we heard at the October 14th, I think it was, hearing, which was a request for a 360-degree view of the parking lot, which is what we provided, but I sense from the comments, is what you're really looking for is a series of photos of the perimeter showing the existing conditions of the perimeter?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
The 360s, you know, charming, but it doesn't give us any information, so we're trying to understand like what are the conditions all the way around, so that because we look at the fence, we look at the, whether there's repairs needed to the asphalt, all that kind of stuff, right?
Okay, understood. It was just a, misunderstood what was being requested there, so we'll get you those photos. The, the question was raised, or the comment was made, that all of the parking spaces should be dimensioned as well as the drive widths, the drive widths, I believe, are dimensioned. There is not individual width and lengths for each of the 71 spaces, there are a couple of spaces that are marked as typical, and the dimensions, the length and width dimensions of each block of parking spaces, when divided by the number of parking spaces, gives you either an eight and a half foot width, or an 18 foot length for each of the parking spaces.
The reason that that came up is in earlier sets of drawings, when we realized the parking lot was extending over its property lines, the changes to the drawings were creating these stubby parking spaces to say, oh, look, it fits, but it actually didn't fit. So that's why we asked for the actual dimensions of each of the spaces, so that essentially the architect is certifying that you're getting this many, you can also do 10 times eight and a half, or whatever the horizontal dimension is, they're nine feet, right? So.
The current plan does not have any.
Right.
Stubby parking spaces.
Right, but that's, it doesn't visually, but we, but that was the point, is for instance, one space is dimensioned nine feet, but when I multiply, I don't think, it's 63. Yeah, when I multiply the, the seven spaces, I don't get 63 feet, I get, the string dimension shows 59 feet, so it means that there's a, there's a difference, right? So it's to, so either the string really does add up to nine times however many spaces, or if there are, the, the parking spaces are substandard, unless nine feet's not the standard.
Well, the only parking spaces that are nine feet are the, the, the vertical spaces alongside the, the western block of parking spaces, and between that block and the, and the driveway, everything else is, is eight and a half feet.
Eight, six, okay.
You're correct, we don't, we don't have a string for those seven, nine-foot wide spaces, we can add that if you'd like.
No, it's, it's. So then you've got eight, I don't know, okay. It's simply that now we have to do the math as opposed to you have to do the math, know what I mean?
So do I take it then that?
Just to clarify, what are the size of the spaces, verify that the string totals an 18 or an eight and a half, and so on, on, so it's clear that those are the minimum size spaces. Okay?
Well, do you want us to put like a chart on the side, do it, where we do the division and?
No, you don't need to do that, you can say, like for instance, there's a string that says 72 feet, and you can say each space is 18 feet.
So you want a narrative statement?
Yeah, it's not a narrative, it's just a little note underneath the 72 feet. Under any of the things where there's strings, you can say, when X number of spaces times X feet equals 93.
Okay, so, for example, the 72 feet, in parentheses, we'll put 1, 2, 3, 4 times.
18.
18.
Right.
Okay, not a problem.
But in terms of the, the survey, really, that was our whole concern, that the survey dimensions weren't matching. So is there a way for, just talk to the architect about showing the survey dimensions and the match.
Yes.
On the drawings.
Yes. As I said, I reached out to them yesterday, I wasn't able to get a hold of them or get a response from them. But I want to get an explanation as to why certain of the dimensions are different, and if it's possible to conform the survey or the site plan to the survey.
So, right.
But, as I said, where the survey and the site plan dimensions are different, the survey dimensions are longer, so that if the spaces fit within the dimensions shown on the site plan, they'll, they'll absolutely fit within the dimensions shown on the survey. But I get your point, and I think they should, they should conform, and we'll do our best to get those.
No, the point is, the property line has to match the survey, it can't be longer or shorter, it's the same.
That's what I said, we'll, we're going to try to conform those, those differences.
Okay, so, and so the other thing is, I suppose what we want to have, it restaked, you're going to need, a surveyor needs to go out and restake the site, and move the fencing to the property lines? So that it's done.
We, we are going to do that all as part of the, the improvements, but we're not going to do that until we have your approval of the site plan, and you're satisfied with it. Once you're satisfied with it, then we will go out and do the, do the improvements, and come back to you with evidence that the improvements have been made, to obtain your approval of the, of the application.
Okay, I mean, I don't know what else there is to be done, other than to move the fencing to where the property lines are, and make sure.
Well, the new attendant booth, restriping.
Right, but we've already looked at the plan, right? I don't see how the plan's going to change, other than that you're going to correct the dimensions, right?
Okay.
And the new fencing is all the way around.
Yes, I, I understand your, your point, that notation on the southern property line behind the adjacent properties should be changed from existing steel fencing to the same notation that's all around the rest of the property. Everything will be, will be a new fence.
And I don't, you weren't here in the beginning, but Commissioner Otley-Brown had mentioned that it's the side bracket on 166th Street.
The, I'm sorry, the.
There's a side bracket that's not used.
And it's still there, actually, from the latest photos.
Okay.
It hangs over the sidewalk a little bit, that should, that should be completely taken down.
Okay.
And there was corrugated fencing, that's, all that stuff, it's like, remove all the old fencing and put up new.
Yes.
Okay. But so, I'm, I'm not really understanding why you think you need to, the drawings need to be amended, to correct the dimensions, right? But in terms of going out and doing the work, the dimensions have to match the survey, right? So if the surveyor goes out there and restakes the site, and puts up the fence all the way, and then you put up the fence all the way around, and you install the attendant booth, and you put the light shields on, and you stripe, then there's kind of no difference in activity. So the only change to the drawings would be that the dimensional lines are corrected to match the survey, right? I don't, I don't see a need for yet another review of the proposal.
I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, but it's not to say that, that doesn't mean we close the hearing, it means you go do the work, right?
Yes, understood, understood.
Okay.
But the, the work that we're proposing, except for some of these details with regard to dimensions, the work that we're proposing is acceptable to the board.
Right? Okay, all right, so, step two will be definitely to correct the dimensions on the drawing, make sure that the 18 by eight and a half parking spaces are actually all fitting there, but then go forth, restake, repost, refence, put up the, the shields on the lighting, build the security booth, what else? Take down that miscellaneous sign, and I think that was, that it.
Sign bracket.
Sign bracket.
And the lighting shield.
The lighting shields, I said. Remove the portable toilet once you've made the deal, oh, you, this is, you don't really need a deal, this is part of your own operations, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, you should just do that. Are there any speakers on this? So then, you probably need two, three months to do this work.
Okay.
So have that a September 12th hearing. That's when you'll come back having shown us the.
Okay.
Walk around the entire site, of how beautiful and perfect it is.
Okay. And if, if we think we're going to need more time, we will reach out in advance.
Yeah. But three months, really, that's a lot of time.
That should be submission.
The best work. So submission date is what? Submission date is, what did I say, September 12th, so submission is August 23rd. I think you need, that's exactly three months.
That can be more for the plans and then we can get the photos for the work that has been done.
No, no, no. We want everything. No, no, no. We don't need three months for the plan. We need a week for the plan. So three, so August 23rd, all the physical work will be done. If you think that's cutting it tight, we can do it till the beginning of October.
Okay.
No, no, if you think that's too tight, we can give you an extra month. I think three months would be enough.
I think we estimated, I think we estimated two months, so I think this will be submission time.
Okay, good.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
New case is item number five, 58156BZ, 2401 to 2411, 36th Avenue, Queens.
Good morning. Sandy Anagnostu representing the applicant. I attended the board's review session yesterday and I noted the comments. The board wanted us to clarify the training that's being proposed. And I have Mr. Matthew Arisich here, who's the business manager for Local 12, which is the Heat and Frost Insulators Union. And he will explain the program in detail before, but before he comes up here, I just want to go through your comments. Mainly, the type of instruction that's done here or being proposed is hands-on. It's not so much video instruction. It's hands-on because that's the best way to teach the apprentices to actually use the materials and use the tools. It's done mainly by the use of hand tools and cordless tools. It takes place, it will take place in the building on the cellar floor level where there is, if you look at the plan, training room and computer room on the cellar floor. There's no potential for noise really because it's mainly hand tools and the materials that are used are not toxic. There is no asbestos type, nothing that would be detrimental to the air quality. We can provide more specific information and Mr. Arisich will also discuss the type of materials that are used.
And also the hand tools because tools are noisy. You have a handsaw, that's noisy, so, and everyone's doing it at the same time, right?
The classes occur after 5:00, when the business office closes, and they're four times a week, from 5:00 to usually 9:00. And they run from early September to May. That's the program, the duration of the program. This area is very well served by mass transit. There are 12 existing parking spaces that we're providing. There is no required parking. This is an existing legal non-compliant building. It existed before. Then it was a board case, a variance was granted in 1956. So there is no required parking, but we are providing 12 spaces. If we were to pack it in and have attendant-type parking, we could probably accommodate 22 spaces. However, there is on-street parking. There is also mass transportation, bus lines, the R train, the N line, the W line run here. There is train stations nearby. Also, a ferry service will be introduced in August of this year, which will connect Astoria, Long Island City, Manhattan, and Roosevelt Island. People walk here. A lot of local residents attend this program and the union hall meetings, cycling, their bike lanes. So there are many other modes of transportation besides cars. People also carpool.
Do you know how far away it is from the public transport? Like how far to the trains?
There is a, okay, there's one stop on 31st Street and 36th Avenue or 31st Street and Broadway. It's a few blocks. And there's another one on the R train stops at Steinway Street and 34th Avenue. So it's a few blocks.
How, is it four blocks? Is it...
About four, four or five blocks. A short walk. There was a comment made regarding the fencing. There is existing barbed wire which will be removed. That was not, that barbed wire has been there for many years. The current owners purchased it that way, but they will remove it.
Including the barbed wire on the adjacent neighbor's garage.
So if it's their barbed wire versus the neighbor's barbed wire.
No, I don't believe it is. I believe it's protecting the site, but it's fallen on their garage.
Okay, whatever is on their property, they will remove. They will, they can also paint the fence. And in the rear, where it's, the rear property line, there's actually vegetation there. So that area where the parking is, that area is really screened. You can't really see standing there into the residential yards. It's screened by vegetation. And it's a six-foot-high fence.
As long as the fence is in good condition.
I don't think you really gave us photographs of the parking lot.
Okay, we'll take close-up photos of that area and provide that.
Because I felt that the, that fence also, which is at a higher elevation, kind of, because their backyards are at a higher elevation, that fence is very old and dated. And that also has barbed wire.
He will, they will remove the barbed wire and will provide photos of the fence and it will be painted.
There's going to be construction going on in this site, right? It's a lot of work that's to be done in the building, right?
Correct.
So it's not as if the site's going to be dolled up now because the construction's going to make a mess, right? So it, this is the kinds of things that would happen post-construction, really.
They, yes, they are doing, they are doing and will be doing interior work, interior partition work. They're adding an elevator. So there is a lot of construction that will be going on. There is lighting, which is, it's actually LED lighting and it is pointing downward and away from the residences, but we can show that on our plan.
That's on the parking lot, you mean? Where's the LED lighting?
It's on the, by the building on the sidewalk.
I don't know if we're seeing one.
Okay.
If you could just include those in the drawings.
Yes, we'll revise the drawing to show that.
To show the lighting on the drawing, right?
Correct, yes. The roll-down gates, there was a question about that. We're not proposing to remove that, but we will clean it. I think there's some graffiti. We will clean that up. And also the loading docks, which are existing, we're not removing those.
But what do, what do they, are they used for anything? Why wouldn't they become incorporated into the usable space in the building?
They do, they do accept deliveries here of material, so they do need a loading dock.
Material, maybe this is, these are questions really for the owner. But the materials, if I understand it, there's no actual construction work that comes from here. It's training. So it's materials to train, right? That's not, normally you don't need a loading dock for that kind of thing because it's not like they're delivering thousands of sheets of insulation that need to be distributed off-site, right? So I'm just curious, I understand maybe a loading dock's convenient and it's not to say that there's any requirement to take it out. It's just, it could become useful space, so... So what is it?
There are other questions? Yes.
You said there were 65 visitors a day. And I didn't understand if that was some in the afternoon and some of the, and the rest of the evening, so it was like they're not all there at the same time. So I thought in terms of the parking, that would be helpful to, you know, how many visitors come during the day and then they all go home, you know, the staff and everybody goes home? And then you have the parking lot available for whoever comes by car in the evening.
Right. It's, that's for the entire day, so we could provide a breakdown of, after 5:00, the office closes and the meetings are not, meetings and also training are all held after 5:00 when the offices are closed.
Okay.
Okay. Can we actually speak to?
Yes. Mr. Matthew Arisich.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Matthew Arisich. I'm the business manager for the Heat Frost Insulators. You had mentioned about this, the question about the noise with the hand tools. Let me tell you what we do first and probably put your mind at ease. We deal with insulation. When you think of insulation, you think about the walls, the ceiling, the attic, correct? We don't do that.
HVAC and...
Correct. We work on mechanical equipment exclusively. So if you're worried about the sounds of saws cutting things, this would be the same kind of a sound that you have a saw cutting a pillow. There is, there's no wood. We're not utilizing that. Fiberglass, mineral wool fiber, trimmer, polystyrene, isocyanurates, they're all utilized today in the construction industry. We do not use asbestos, so there's no noxious fumes, there's no hazards, et cetera. If it's necessary to provide MSDS sheets for your review, that would be fine. We could do that as well.
But, so what is it, so what kind of hand tools are you actually using?
Pliers, an occasional saw, razor knives, boning knives, rivet guns, hand drills. So there's no symphony of noise, even if we put them all together.
Even a rivet gun? Rivet guns make noise.
Rivet guns make no noise. You're talking pneumatics and that's not what we do here. This is very low technology. It's high skill. We've been around since 1884. You probably haven't met any of us. So... We're actually in buildings now where people don't even know we're there. We work in the mechanical rooms, we work in the basements, and we'll be in that building for months at a time. And they don't hear us, they don't see us. Really, just that simple.
You also do abatement, asbestos insulation?
No, no, we don't do that. That's actually a sister local, that's 12A.
Okay. All right. So then I'm...
You want to know about the loading docks, correct? The reason about the loading docks is when the, when the facility becomes operational, what happens is you do have boxes of mechanical insulation that comes in. There is no reason to take the loading dock out because it actually adds value to the building. We, if we had purchased a building without it, we would not have installed one. So, but it makes no sense to incur a cost.
How often do you get such deliveries?
You can have deliveries a couple times a week or once every few months. Yeah. So there's, there's no...
It's not frequent every day.
Correct. That's why I said if we had no loading dock, that would have been fine. Open doors work well for us as well, even on sites in the city.
Right. So what we see is, for instance, if you didn't have the loading dock and the drive up to the loading dock could become someplace for parking, for example.
You could, you could.
Right, so if you had any traditional parking, you could just park cars in front of it.
We've already tried to address that going forward, so when we're complete with the building in about a year or two, our idea is that we would try to excavate the current parking lot, dig down and add another level. And then this way it's operational and you can go ahead and park underneath and another 20 cars or something.
And then, I guess they, so could you explain sort of what, how the building is used during the entire day because you're just talking about classes in the evening?
Yeah, well, we don't really do anything. We've moved the entire operation over to Local 12A, which is in College Point. I don't know if Sandy has mentioned it. But what happens is this, during the day, you'll see as many as five people there, six people, that's it, for a 23-foot square foot building, 20,000 square foot building. The reason is, the fund office is actually going to be located in the building, the union office, and then the training office. And that's it. So, and when you're saying as many as, say, 35 to 40 people, that's because what you'll have is you can have apprentices going there after work, which is when the building becomes operational.
Okay, so, so when I look at, I'm just looking at the floor plans where you've got conference rooms and offices in the cellar, for example. All of that is really being used after 5:00?
No, we're not using it at all. Actually, what happens is if you look at that building, the floor plan, you'll see a lot of open space. Then you'll see a small area where there's a dumbwaiter and that actually has a training office, which nobody's there.
No, 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 in the new plans, the new plan.
It is the new plan.
If I look at the first floor plan...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking the basement.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed one spoke.
Which one do you want?
Sorry, let's start in the, okay, start in the cellar. You have a computer room, a classroom, and a training room. And a supply room, okay.
Along the 24th Street side, you'll have two offices that are actually going to use for classrooms. The one, they actually have blast walls. One is because it's going to utilize the light that comes from outside. The one light, the one room is actually adjacent to the elevator and that's going to be used for training, but only for training for educational, such as OSHA training, financial training, abatement awareness training, various OSHA 30s. If you want to do instructions for other grades, intermechanics, that's where that could all take place. The next room is actually the computer room, which actually doubles as a classroom. The reason it's going to do that is we're actually embracing what's called FLIR technology. It's forward-looking infrared. It's the new technology that tells you exactly how much money you can save by doing energy audits. That's the future of this business. To let you know where we are from a few years ago when I took over, it's been busy in the city, but if you can make a comparison between us and the other unions, you'll notice that we've grown 20%. We're only scratching the surface. This FLIR technology has the ability to go ahead and provide more opportunity for jobs, for careers, actually, not even jobs. I don't like to use the word jobs because if you use a job, after that job is over, you have nowhere else to go. These are reoccurring jobs, regenerative jobs, which is the best way to put it.
And so then the next floor, then the first floor?
On the first floor, you'll have, in the bottom corner, on the right-hand, left-hand side, you'll have the entrance there. That's where the elevator comes in. You'll either come there or go up the steps. That'll lead into a lobby. Along the left-hand side, which is your 36th, I'm sorry, your 24th Street side, that's actually the fund office. So you'll have a couple of offices there, the fund manager as well, copy room, and it leads down a hallway. If you go the other direction and you come up and walk down 24th Street, I'm sorry, 36th Avenue side, you'll see a row of offices as well. Those are really offices for the agents so that when they come there during a time when they're not in the field, because they're field representatives, they don't spend time in the office. There's two people that run this business. 580 people, it's run by two people.
So those offices that are on the 24th side, those are the five people who are there during the day?
That would be the three.
The three people who are there during the day.
Correct, correct. The other, the other two would be actually if you walk down on the 36th Avenue side, there's an office in the center and another office in the center. I take one of the offices and then the administrative assistant takes one across the hall.
All right. And then those other ones in the middle, those are for...
One is a conference room. The conference room is so we can go ahead and hold meetings on occasion, like a New York, New Orleans conference. Energy efficiency training offices, which they want to go ahead and have a think tank. We can have our other local unions come there as well.
Okay.
And then the meeting hall holds about 216 people.
So it's basically functioning as a very quiet office during the day?
Compared to the people that were there, yes. There was over 100 people in that building on a regular day.
And how often, you're going to be teaching these classes? Every day, Monday through Thursday, right?
It's going to, when, when everything gets rolling, it's going to be Monday through Thursday from 5:00 to 9:00, so...
For the same people every day?
No, they're recurring apprentice classes.
Okay, so they come like once a week or twice a week?
They would come once a week.
And it's just the past 30 apprentices at a time in this class?
That's really kind of like, the max is 34, really, is what it is, so...
Okay.
Yeah, we've taken other classes and, you know, through the period of when you get them in to the time they actually start class, you'll lose a half a dozen. That's what happens.
And how long does an apprentice program last?
It runs for four years.
Wow. And so while they're apprentices, are you sending them out in the field also?
Yes.
So they're working with a master installer?
Correct.
Yeah.
Genuinely.
Okay. Thank you. Very helpful.
I will, thank you. Is there any more questions?
I don't know. Any other questions? No, thank you. That was sort of helpful in hearing things. Okay. So, but I'm just seeing if there's... So, but I'm just seeing if there's anything else that we really need done. So maybe.
The containers.
The containers that you're.
One of those containers.
Oh, yes.
You have to come back or you're going to speak.
In the containers is our data, which is all of the files that we had when we moved from a building at 2519 43rd Avenue, which is the other side of Queens Plaza.
And they're going to be, once you move in?
It's just, it's essentially like furnishings. We didn't want to put it in storage, so we got containers to go on site. So.
So in terms of the construction schedule and so on, you started doing interior renovation?
Yes.
And how much, what's your projected completion time, given that you're in control of the insulation?
We really hope to be done completely about 120 days and then be signed off in like 180. We're already on our 21st month, so it's well behind schedule.
Wow.
Yeah. So you can understand the gravity of problems.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
And is this holding you up?
This, there's a lot of things holding us up. I mean, we've run into some problems such as, I don't know if you're familiar with the grade beam. There was a grade beam under the location where we had to put our elevator, so what they had to do was have the engineering come in, cut it, reincorporate it into the foundation. So between that, a water issue because we had water, it actually went from the roof onto the sidewalk, so we had to reconnect the existing drain through a pipe. We actually had to replace gas lines. I mean, there's a lot of things happen all at once.
Okay. Any other questions that we left out? Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
So I'm just thinking, the only thing that we asked for them to do was to show lighting on the plans.
And there's some errors in the statement and the proposed plan still say warehouse instead of, in the section, things, you know, little things like that.
We can correct that.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to do is.
Oh, I see, on P5, warehouse.
And then I think your statement in some places still had the 20,000 square foot floor area instead of, you know, half of that because of the cellar now.
Nothing for them.
Right.
There's, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner, we'll, we'll correct that.
So what I'd like you to do, because it's only a few little changes to the drawings, which your client and you can work on to make sure they're done really, really fast, I'd like you to make those changes immediately so that you come back and we can be finished with this. I don't want it to drag on anymore. Okay? So the only changes then are showing the lighting where it exists on the exterior on the plans, showing that it's going to have light shield so it doesn't shine on to neighbors, right? Make those coordination corrections that are in the statement of facts, right? And where else are the coordination corrections? Plans.
In the section.
In the section.
Right. And there are some in the statement.
Statement of facts, right? That's about the number of employees and users, right?
Are we supposed to get big photos of the parking lot?
Yeah. A lot of photos of the parking lot, which that could be done, I assume you go there every day, so photos of the parking lot. And also a map showing the location of the public transportation. Okay? So with a little focus, all that could be done in two weeks.
I'm removing barbed wire.
You want to remove the barbed wire now?
It was, instead it fell on the neighbors.
I think that can be part of the larger trunk. Yeah, but I mean, you just make a note that all the barbed wire and the fence will be painted.
Noted on the plans.
Noted on the plans, yeah. But the, yeah, and the fencing will be painted. Just note that on the plan, so no barbed wire, fencing shall be painted.
And graffiti removed.
And graffiti removed on the drawings, says on the drawings. We'll make that a condition also. Okay? So if we do that, I think you could do that within two weeks, no problem?
Yes, definitely.
Right? So that would be a submission on June 7th for a continue, for the, a decision, I think, on June 20th or 27th?
27.
27, on June 27th. Okay?
Great.
Yeah, so I'd like to close this based on that understanding. So for, are there any speakers on this? All right. For a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number 65896 BZ, 277 Park Avenue, Manhattan.
Good morning, Chair Perlmutter and Commissioners and Staff. Jeff Mulligan from Kramer Levin for the applicant. We attended the review session yesterday. There were a couple of comments. The first on floor area, I believe all the documents that were submitted in March accurately identify the correct square footage of the PC at 13,428 square.
No, 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 that's not for you to correct. That was a note to correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because there was a change and it might not get picked up if we don't flag it.
Got it, got it.
We did receive your massage licenses.
You did? Okay. Good. And then question about the fire alarm system so we can submit photos and the last inspection to confirm that. And in terms of signs, we did, so the signs that are etched in glass were included in the sign analysis.
Including the ones along Lexington Avenue?
Well, so there's the ones that are etched in glass at, say, Manhattan Athletic Club. And they were not included in 07, but arguably they're signs because they're on the building etched in the glass. The other images you were pointing out on 48th and on Lex are just paper that is taped into the window. And so it's with, according to the 1210 definition of signs, it's a sign that I know you're all very familiar with. It's a sign when within a building, only when illuminated and located in a window. So it's not illuminated. So it's just the paper that's there.
Just maybe make a little note in the drawing like that, so.
Sure.
That's what you're relying on and that's the building's department.
Fine. Okay. Fair enough. Fair enough. Any other questions?
So, oh, yes. So what do we say? Fire department we still needed and let me just.
And we can submit that right away.
Yeah, so the notes say, still say fire alarm will be installed, so we need the proof that it was installed. Maybe you submitted something already? I don't know. No?
No, we just got it.
Okay, so let's get Mr. Scududo to speak if he's got any information, otherwise you not know anything yet?
Yes, sir.
There isn't any.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Anthony Scududo, Fire Department. As of last night, anyway, there's no record of applications for testing, so they still have a wait to go.
Ah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that one, that's kind of a critical one, right?
I'm sorry, the.
There's no record of application for testing.
For testing. I do have a.
Your proposed plan still say that a fire alarm system shall be installed.
Well, you know, there's, there's, we're submitting a new floor plan and that says that it has been installed.
Okay.
The other plans, the other plans are from 96 and they're not changing and they were hand drawn, so it can't really update them. So those say will be, but the new floor plan says that it has been installed.
But is it installed?
It is, yeah, absolutely. We've got the photos and then we do have an inspection from 2013 that was forwarded out.
Yeah, it's not yet.
So it's not in the BSA record we need to submit? Okay, got it.
Right. Okay, so that's, and we did see the community board waived its right to recommend. Okay. Are there any speakers on this? Any other comments? Commissioners? Okay, because we're still, you know, the fire department sign off is always a critical moment on these extensions of term, so we do need, there were plans to be revised to show non-illuminated signs in the window, right? And your reliance on Section 1210. And also providing information about the fire alarm system.
Right.
And then the fire department will review that and if it's not up to speed, up to date or something, then it's going to be, have to be brought up to date.
Got it.
All right, so how much, what is our next really slot?
How long will it take to do this?
Yeah.
A week?
Right. It's just, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we don't have room until the 27th.
Yeah, until July 20.
June 27th.
We have.
We could, for this, yeah.
All right, so June 27th for continuation with a submission on, yeah, June 7th.
Then if we're in good shape, we can.
Then we can close both. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 7, 704 BZ, 2208 Bowler Avenue, Bronx.
Hello, good morning, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday and we heard some of the board's comments. We're proud to say that the church does have financing in place. They have a commitment and we do not yet have permits.
Good.
And they're excited to build. It's been 14 years. You've been trying to, trying to raise money for 14 years. We apologize it's taken 14 years to come back to you to actually build it.
Well, okay. Are there any speakers on this? I don't think anybody else had any issues? No? Okay, so then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashley Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 8, 11707 BZ, 222 East 34th Street, Manhattan.
Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of the applicant, we attended yesterday's review session and first the board noted that there was a reduction in floor area and a change in operating hours. You said that was a note for council?
Yeah.
Thought so, okay. I wasn't sure if it was for us council.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Next time I will be more specific.
No, that's okay. A lot of councils in the room, so.
I just, I body the council, but maybe it's not, yeah.
No, that's our fault.
The recording also can't tell. I've turned my body.
The second comment, I believe, was about the massage licenses. There are no massages offered at the facility and none are proposed, so there's that. And then in terms of the fire department approval, an interior fire alarm and sprinkler system were both installed by the previous operator, that the operator that obtained the original approval and then Crunch took over in 2013. So we have the reports from the Department of Buildings, Biz System, that shows that that can be submitted in the next submission.
Okay.
And I believe the final comment was from Vice Chair Shanda regarding the additional signage posted on the second floor. There are, in fact, four sticker signs in the windows on the second floor not shown on the submitted existing plans. Those plans have been revised and they can be submitted in the next submission, but the bottom line is that even with those signs, the total square footage is still below the maximum permitted of 150 square feet. So they are permitted.
Thank you. Great. Any other comments, anything from the Commissioners? No. Are there any speakers? Okay. And fire department is going to wait until they get submission? Oh, you want to say it's, okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Anthony Scududo, Fire Department. I checked my records and it agrees with what Mrs. Rubenstein said. There was an existing system, it was approved, and if there's been no changes, then we have no objection to continuing.
So you'll submit us a no objection letter?
Sure. Absolutely.
But then I'm taking.
We have no objection if you.
I don't think, so I'd like to, so it's revising plans about the signage. So how about just simply a condition which is standard anyway that says that signage shall not exceed what's permitted, right? It's 150 square feet?
Correct. Yes, that's the max.
So let me, let's just do that because if fire department signs off, why?
Yeah.
We can also just take a petition.
Yes.
That's what I mean.
That's exactly, you don't need a letter.
It was only if we still really needed something else. Okay. So on second thought, let's do it like this. So we'll make a condition of approval that signage complies with the signage regulations not exceed 150 square feet. And we note that no massages are offered. And we advise board council about the reduction in floor area and the change of operating hours. Okay, and on that note, are there no speakers on this? I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashley Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashley Brown?
Aye.
Thanks so much.
They're going to need a few minutes to set up, but I'll call it as anyway. Appeals calendar, continued hearing items, item number nine, 2016 4329A, 2001 Barto Avenue, the Bronx.
Sorry, I know it's taking a while.
Oh, yeah.
It froze, so it's like.
Rick, you made one of them.
Yeah, I moved it.
Oh, okay. You'll do it?
I can move my.
No, no, because if you want to hit them.
How's that?
Ooh, that was so much better. My brain is running.
One more second.
Ooh, that was so much better. My brain is running.
You ready? Good morning, Richard Leland of Acram and LLP for the applicant. We did attend the review session yesterday and listened greatly and intently to the chair's statements. Should I wait for Vice Chair Shanda to come back?
She's here.
My apologies. As I was saying, we were here a review session yesterday, listened quite intently to what the chair said regarding this application, which I guess we're going to colloquially call Barto Two. So I want to start with what we agree upon. I think we agree that the issue really here boils down to how many signs do we have? That the issue which was raised in March with respect to a purported need for a permit from the throughway authority has been resolved by virtue of the certification of New York City by the state as having an appropriate regime of its own to meet the requirements of the federal highway.
And I, since you're setting forth what you believe the board agrees, I disagree that we agree on that last point.
That's okay, I mean, we have, you know, you have a right to disagree, I have a right to disagree.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, but you said we agree.
Oh.
So this is your, these are your positions, which is excellent.
Okay, I'll restate that as my position. And I believe that the throughway authority made a similar position, and that was made, just for the record, after a presentation of full information to the throughway authority, including the highway agreement between the Federal Highway Administration and the State Department of DOT and the acceptance by the Federal Highway Administration of the DOT's certification of New York City as having an appropriate regime. But be that as may, let's talk now more about 1210 and Barto One and its effect on Barto Two. So we have argued here that in Barto One, a particular, a basis for the, a principal basis for the board's determination was that the advertising panels in the then-proposed signage were a single sign because they were affixed to a single structure such as, for example, the elements which make up the History Channel sign and the Empire Hotel sign, which are in the record there, and not to multiple structures as are, for instance, the signs located 352 West 13th Street and 621 11th Avenue. So I have a photo here of the, this is the West 13th Street sign, and you can see that these are two signs on separate armatures, on separate pieces of a monopole structure. And because of that portion of the board's ruling in Barto One, what we submitted to the Department of Building in this instance was a structure which, unlike the History Channel grid, which is what the board pointed to in Barto One, is similar to what is on West 13th Street, which is a, each separate panel rests on a separate armature, meaning that these are multiple structures, signs on multiple structures. Now, in the statement yesterday, the chair referred to the Cowan matter, the Cowan case in the Court of Appeals for the proposition that the board or to support, what I heard the board to say, the chair to say, was that, well, we think that we were wrong about 13th Street and that 13th Street is indeed one sign. I hope I'm not misstating what I heard yesterday, Chair Promoter. And I respectfully disagree with that interpretation of Cowan, because Cowan was a variance case, Cowan dealt with the issue of whether there was discriminatory determination made by the Smithtown zoning board with respect to a variance, a series of variances on the same street and in the same subdivision. This is not a variance, this is not a matter of making separate subjective findings with respect to a particular piece of property, and particularly as I read the Court of Appeals decision, and I would ask an opportunity to provide the board with more refined and more thought, more thought-out reasoning, legal reasoning, seeing that this was just mentioned yesterday. This is not a situation where you're interpreting a statute. It's not a situation where we're not making an argument about similarly situated, we're making an argument about how the zoning resolution is to be interpreted. So, and the language which said in the Cowan decision, which quoted Judge Lehman as saying that you can correct mistakes, was actually, in my view, dictum and not part of the decision in Cowan, again, a variance is a whole different animal. Here you sit more as an interpretive body, not as a body granting relief from zoning Another thing that came up yesterday was a discussion, and this came up in the chair's statement and it came up in the comments from the Department of Buildings, was this concept that the proposed signs are parallel. They're not parallel. Proposed signs are at an acute angle and, Mr. Davis is going to show some slides which will show you that, these are not parallel signs that are back to back. It's almost, I don't know exactly what the angle is, but any, and not only did the Department of Buildings rely on this concept of parallelism, but so did the court in the determination in the case that we brought with respect to Barto One, which I may, we have made a motion for leave to re-argue with respect to that particular point.
In that sense, I was quoting the court statement.
I understand that.
I read yesterday, yeah.
I understand that. But I think that's an error that somehow in the record, as a matter of fact, my understanding is that during Barto One, this was fleshed out and photos were shown, is also my understanding with respect to Barto One, that the Department of Buildings made the argument about a single structure and that was initially rejected by the board and the board went on to rule on different matters. Let me go on.
Just a question about that. Are you now saying that you are asking another question about what the signs are with respect to whether or not they're parallel? Like, why does it matter whether they're parallel or not parallel in terms of what you're...
Well, because the determination that someone's, there's been statements saying that, well, they're, you know, the ones that are parallel to each other are one, are one to be deemed one sign, and they're not parallel.
No, it's not one sign, no, 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 it's for the purpose of measurements.
Right.
Right? It says if they're back to back and parallel, or some words to that effect, that you only measure the sign once.
Right.
In terms of maximum surface area, because presumably you can't see it, right?
Right, but that's not applicable here. All I'm saying is it's not applicable.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Another statement that was made both in Barto One and here with which we take some issue is the concern of the board with respect to the, what may, very well may be deemed, and we don't agree, a nuisance to residents in the buildings behind the signs. Whether that is or isn't is not, with all respect, before the board, because the issue here has to do with the matter of measuring signs for the purpose of Section 32-662 of the zoning resolution, dealing with the size of signs within proximity of arterial highways. If there is a problem with signage in a C7 district facing a residential area, that's a matter for an amendment to zoning resolution, but not a matter of an interpretation of 1210 or 32662. We are remaining on our argument that the definition of the extreme limits in the writing is the end of each panel, with respect to which there is a separation, and with respect to the fact that, as we believe was required under Barto One, we have modified our signage to provide a separate structure for each sign, and therefore within 1210, we have a sign on a structure. If you take the, if we can take the argument that you have to go to the extreme end of the structure on which a sign sits, then a sign that would be on a building, which is a structure, could be deemed to be, to go to the extreme end of the building, not just the extreme end of the pictorial representation in the sign. I have, before we can, I have more to say, but before we do that, I'd like Mr. Davis to show you some slides which show up some of our points.
Hi, good morning, Michael Davis for the applicant. I apologize that I'm going to be a drop rude, my wife is full term with our fourth, and so I'm going to be checking my phone if it rings. My middle child is actually younger than this case, which is, we appreciate all the time that everybody's put into this. And these are the slides as well, if you could walk through a number of slides, and this will seem long, which I apologize, but most of these are images and we'll get through them very quickly. So the first, the first thing I'd like to discuss and... So the question of parallel, I know, it will seem like I'm going on about this for a while, but I think it's taken on outsized importance, both in Barto One and the chair's comments, certainly throughout the DOB's writings, and certainly as referenced by the judge in the Article 78 decision with regard to Barto One. This image was shown briefly during the initial proceedings, but I think it's important to share it for just a moment, because the angles here are clearly not parallel, and we'll get to why that's so important in just a moment, because the issues come up as being dispositive throughout these proceedings. So in the initial 1961 definition of surface area of a sign and sign, the back-to-back and parallel language, which was viewed as dispositive by the court, didn't exist. It was added as a text change in 1963. Strangely, these are fairly hard to find because they're not indexed in a searchable way, so you have to read thousands literally of applications to find this, but we're lucky it was 1963 and not 1971, so it was fairly early on in the process of going through the PDFs, and I apologize. Let me change the brightness a little bit, make it a little more clear. So what was added to the definition in 1963, which you guys have in front of you as well, is a text change adding, "When two signs of same shape and dimension are mounted or displayed back-to-back in parallel on a single freestanding structural frame, only one of such signs shall be included in computing the total surface area of the two signs." So they remain separate signs, but this effectively is a gimme. If you imagine side A and B of a record, you're only measuring side A, and so in districts where there are surface area maximums, were you to bump up against the limit with a single sign, the back of that sign is a gimme, and how this came to be is instructive. It was at the request of the Outdoor, sorry, it's hard to read, the Outdoor Advertising Association, Metropolitan Outdoor Advertising Association, and it was, the changes as proposed amended the definition of surface area of signs to permit greater flexibility...
Just a second, I can't hear you.
Sorry. The signs were added to allow for greater flexibility in the construction of ground signs. And so effectively, that language, paragraph two of the surface area definition in 1210, exists to give a bonus to someone, that when you meet four distinct criteria, and we'll get to those in a moment, when they're the same size and the same dimension, and also exactly parallel and back-to-back, if you meet all four of those criteria, you don't have to count the surface area of the B side. Nothing in that is instructive in any way as to how to measure the A side. And so as we go on to how that was used, both by DOB and by the court, it's quite instructive. The court, again, the decision was long, the court references throughout the decision in at least 12 locations that there are 54 signs, and we think this is actually the dispositive moment of the court's resolution, and DOB, as you'll see in a moment, and we'll read it in DOB's language instead of here in the courts, in Mr. Wallace's letter of May 3rd, they agreed that additionally, the department notes, "The Supreme Court, New York County, in its decision dated March 13, 2007 regarding appellant's prior application of this site concluded, when rednecks entirety, the petitioner, here the appellant's arguments, rest on a misconstruction and misinterpretation of Section 1210 in the BSA's final resolution. It is clear from the record that the 27 signs," and again, that is what I'll call the A side, "one single visual plane in the same directional orientation. The 27 signs are mounted and displayed back-to-back in parallel on a single freestanding structural frame, and therefore must be calculated as a whole and not individually." And if we ignore the B side of our installation for a moment, I think that everyone on this board would agree without question that these two signs, separate from each other by whatever distance would be dispositive, although the gaps are not dispositive, these two signs can never be parallel or back-to-back to one another. That's a scientific impossibility. That criteria can never apply to signs in a single directional orientation. And the court's interpretation, which is why we filed motion for leave to re-argue, was that the 27, which are all in the single directional orientation, are somehow unified by the parallel and back-to-back language, which we think plainly does not apply. And so this is an image that I frankly fault myself for, because this is page one of the application in Barto One, and I'm going to concede something that we hadn't talked about at length. These plainly look parallel, no question about it, and frankly, all of the plans have been in the record for quite some time. So if you go to the very next page of the plans, it's...
Mr. Davis, you want to take the mic if you want to hit the...
Oh, sure, thank you.
And maybe slow your speech down just a tiny bit?
I'm a non-attorney and non-practiced in this, so I appreciate the indulgence of the board.
Well, you know, when we prescribe it, it's a little harder. Yeah.
My sincere apologies, I will attempt to slow down. My mom tells me the same thing, and I should have gotten better, I failed high school speech. So the very next page of the plans makes clear that these signs are installed at acute angles to one another back and forth, and so if, for suspending disbelief, we could all agree that that paragraph two, added in 1963, does not apply in any way to any part of this installation, I think that'll be helpful and we can get to the next slides very quickly. Again, this is, again, these three crossarms, this is Barto One, this is not the current iteration, this is how it was proposed in Barto One, we actually didn't redo this particular render, but as you see those angles, I think we can all agree they're not parallel. And so just for the purpose of quickly showing examples of where this does apply, and we have literally hundreds of them, our files are becoming overwhelming in this case, there are hundreds of examples, this is a double-faced sign in the language at the state level in both directions, actually. This is a parallel and back-to-back sign. These are further examples of parallel and back-to-back signs, they're the same size, same dimension, and they're front and back to each other and exactly parallel. As you look, if you go down the West Side Highway, you'll see these signs are everywhere, and there are many places where they would be in excess of individual aggregate surface area limits if they were to be looked at as a single sign. And so this rule that the Outdoor Advertising Association asked for is not a distinction without a difference. This allows many signage installations to have more square footage or surface area on individual signs than would otherwise be allowed. And here's some examples of signs more similar to ours, and literally, again, we have thousands of these, not just hundreds, and if you guys want more, we can certainly share them. These are at acute angles, this is a rooftop sign on Bruckner Avenue, this is the 11th Avenue signs, which were the subject of the DOB's comments and this board's comments in the earlier application. This is, of course, the Gansevort sign at 13th Street, also, which I know that the chair thinks should have been viewed as one, we disagree and we'll share why. This is the rear of that sign, and this is instructive, and we'll get to some comments by Ms. Miller from Barto One's conclusion. Each of these outriggers supports a grid, and each of those grids support an individual sign, which is the standard that was clearly articulated and hopefully will not end up being disavowed, because we believe it was correct, and there was a lot of thought and a lot of hearings that went into, Pat, stepping back, we understand that the signage regulations are outdated and very challenging, and maybe they didn't contemplate everything that might happen, which may mean it's a time for a refresh of the sign regulations, and that would be a very worthy product of city planning. But in an interpretive appeal, the ZR as written is what governs, and if it has limitations, it should be updated, but that falls to a conversation outside the conversation we're having here. These two, again, are not parallel back-to-back, but they're on the same installation. Ironically, these all share a grid, so as you know, we strenuously disagreed with the grid standard, which primarily was viewed on grandfather rooftop signs, but that standard survived judicial scrutiny and has become the law of the land. There are literally hundreds and hundreds of these applications throughout the city, all permitted separately, on buildings, on monopoles, on rooftop grids, on hundreds of different iterations, the express sign in Times Square, if someone had asked in Barto One what the lattice work behind it looked like. There are literally thousands of examples, and we have yet to find a single example, not even one, in the entire history, and I hate saying something that exhaustive, because I'm sure someone will find one, that was treated by a plan examiner who looked at it a little differently than another plan examiner. But across thousands of applications, no one has ever been similarly treated to us. Not one application, not ever, and that's challenging. Here's the one that, on the West Side Highway at 42nd Street, the Coors one, which is the subject of much discussion, however it was attached, if a building or other structure served to unify it, every one of these signs becomes non-conforming, all of them, and all of them have to be treated the same way we are to avoid it being arbitrary and capricious. Certainly the signs at 34th Street, which are amazing signs, all of which are at their individual maximums, which clearly work in unison, no one has ever been subjected to the test we're being subjected to in history, and that is bothersome to us, but we're here to address all those questions. Again, this is just a few minutes up on the West Side Highway from the last one, an example of signs that are at an acute angle and our view as being at an acute angle, we don't have to watch all the videos. In the BSA resolution, one of the things we noticed most, and we've color-coded some of this, and we know you're all very familiar with this resolution, is there were four separate statements allowing for DOB's inconsistency in this board's de novo review, which we don't argue with, but looking at the four and how they iterate, it doesn't seem defensive, but we do think it's instructive. We're not evaluating, this is from the board in paragraph 39, "It is not evaluating DOB's process in reaching the final determination or the entire spectrum of its enforcement of signage regulations contained in the ZR." The board further notes down in paragraph 49, "Inconsistencies in DOB's enforcement do not necessarily render the determination improper." In 53, "Moreover, the board notes it is not, it is being called upon to evaluate the final determination, not to review the entirety of DOB's enforcement policy." And number four, in the conclusion, "The board notes DOB has been inconsistent in its analysis of surface area calculations and in determining whether separate sign panels mounted to a single structure are multiple signs or a single sign." And so when you actually go a little further into it, and this is, again, was the justification for de novo review, which we grant, this board is not bound by DOB's prior policy, but it is instructive in what the plain language means. When hundreds of plan examiners across more than a half a century have all read things the same way, we do think that's instructive on the plain language interpretation of how it ought be read absent a change by the City Planning Commission to the ZR, which we agree needs updating. So one structure, one sign was debated on this stage for almost two hours and summarily rejected by all five then-commissioners. It was one of those, if it does not fit, it must, you must acquit sort of moments. One structure, one sign didn't withstand scrutiny in light of DOB's policy citywide. And so what happened at the final hearing is Ms. Miller got up and there were a lot of questions, bantering sort of quickly back and forth, and she commented that you could have a structure on top of a structure on top of a monopole, which is clarified at length in the resolution, the notion that you could have structures on structures. Now, it's further important to note that the PW1 form has been around for a very long time, and there were questions on it, like is the roof sign open, closed, or permitted, which literally no one in the sign industry knew what they meant. We had to go back to the 1916 codes to find out that you got a bonus for building bigger roof signs, which explained the grandfathered signage, and why they tended to be open grid signs and not closed billboard signs. But even in light of that, there's nothing in the PW1 form that tracks how a sign is attached. In fact, you can change the mode of attachment of a sign at any time with just a simple application... application to DOB. So, structure, you're told to not use structure in determining surface area, but structure can be changed at any time without the need to issue a new sign permit. So, while we struggle with the notion that structure should have been the single most dispositive issue, even if you allow it to be the most dispositive issue, a building or other structure is the definition on which a sign can be placed. And so Ms. Miller correctly pointed out that it's the grid, so to speak. Elements on an open grid, like you saw in History Channel, are unified by that open grid, because BSA I has become law. Elements on a closed one, or you have two separate grids, like we'll see in a second, are to be treated differently. And this is obvious when you read the board's own resolution. And again, most of these points were not contentious at the time with regard to structure. It was a gridded structural framework. And paragraph 20 is one of my favorite ones, because this was included by the board from the DOB's own ZRD I. And in that ZRD I, if you look at the part that's highlighted, the DOB, which was fully familiar with all the plans, and maybe didn't focus as much on page one, which got sort of snipped into a picture, conceded that the vertical planes do not appear to be parallel to one another. The judge takes that language and makes it dispositive, which we found challenging. But DOB itself concedes these signs are not parallel in paragraph 20. Only a few, and this is the surface area of the sign, we're certainly familiar with this definition. By paragraph 25, the board, in stating the appellant's position, writes that the signs are parallel. To be clear, we have never said that they're parallel, they're not factually parallel, and they shouldn't be viewed as parallel, but somehow there's a departure from paragraph 20, and for the remainder of the resolution, for the court's interpretation, and for DOB's subsequent treatment of it. Everyone focuses in on language that applies only to parallel signs that does not apply in this case. And so DOB in paragraph 20 concedes the signs are neither parallel nor back-to-back. And yet by paragraph 25, our position is morphed into one where people are under the impression that the signs are parallel. The next three paragraphs, we think, are extremely important, because these weren't sideshows, this was not a small matter of what the board decided in Barto I. There's actually great specificity in these three paragraphs. So I'd like to go through them in a granular way, again, with my apologies that this is taking so long, and an appreciation for everyone's time. "With respect to signs and sign structures located at 352 West 13th Street and 621 11th Avenue, for which DOB issued multiple sign permits at each location, DOB maintains the grids attached to the pole structures at those locations are designed to support two separate billboards, each with defining backgrounds. Therefore, they appropriately received two sign permits and are qualified as separate zoning signs." And the following paragraph gives a lot more color to the board's understanding of DOB's position, which we agree with. "Whereas DOB further argues further, the structural grid which supports the single History Channel sign and Empire Tel sign is conceptually identical and structurally similar to each of the two grids..." And we have here, "the two grids that are separately attached to the pole structures at 352 West 13th Street and 621 11th Avenue," meaning, if I were to scroll back to the picture we saw earlier of the rear of Ganseport, each outrigger supported an individual grid, and that grid supported one sign. So, the initial installation, when we did it, and I could scroll back to the picture if you'd like to, was just like History Channel. We agree. It was a single open grid to which many panels were attached. None had, no structural system was separate. They were not separated in the way that 11th Avenue or Ganseport were separated. But the board correctly identified that citywide, that's not the position that's ever been taken for any other purpose. And so, in 93, the board concurred and gives even more clarity to its understanding. "The majority of the board concludes the advertising panels are single sign and not multiple signs, because they are affixed to a single structure, as are, for example, the elements which make up History and Empire Hotel, and not to multiple structures, for instance, like the signs at 352 West 13th Street and 11th Avenue, which have multiple structures affixed to a single pole." And with respect to the chair's position, this wasn't an accidental or anecdotal point in Barto I. This was the conclusion of Barto I. Not that these could be read as one sign, but that if there were individual grids, they were individual signs. And if the code should be updated, then city planning should update it. But we shouldn't be prejudiced by the fact that this is the way the code is written today and has been enforced in no less than six ECB appeals cases, all of which the city won, defended by the city in front of this board of the 330 Bruckner, although it wasn't the issue that was decided upon, because it was able to be decided on a different threshold issue. It has been unambiguous, and I would posit with great respect to this board, that inconsistency as articulated, is not inconsistency at all, it's only us. We get it. Everybody hates this installation. And maybe it's a nuisance. And I know that yesterday had this salacious... Gentlemen's clubs are unsavory uses, and they're restricted highly. But even for an unsavory use, if they meet all the criteria that allow it to happen, they're allowed to be installed, notwithstanding that people think they might not be a great use. And the public policy implications, as the judge noted in her decision, are not dispositive. That's not what happens in an appeals case. We're almost at the end here. "Whereas the board concluded the gaps didn't matter, the majority of the commissioners concur with DOB, the structural grid or frame is the proper denominator," but that's in, sorry, in paragraph 97, "the structural grid or frame is the proper denominator, which we agree with, but that is limited by the grid itself." And then lastly, the board notes in 99, again, that same stress in the fact they're parallel, which they aren't, which talks about how the novelty of the case before it, and because it's mounted back-to-back and parallel on a single freestanding structural frame. Again, that is not the installation that's before this board properly. If you talk about how this would iterate, and this is one of the ones that sort of drove me personally most bananas, there's a 500-foot limitation on accessory signage in this particular district on the left. As we presented to the board in Barto I, every one of those, as do every directory sign citywide, for the most part, have separate signs. And so in the configuration shown, which we could mirror, the board's position was that on the left you have 15 signs, which are obviously larger than 500 feet, and on the right you have one. That's challenging. That seems an improper construction, that the one on the left is 15 with 1-inch gaps, and the one on the right is to be viewed as one with 1-foot gaps. That would be true of every mall directory sign throughout the city, every directory sign generally. This is a new one that was before the very same board, we put this forth in Barto I. The sign is now existing with advertising on it. It's a cluster of six signs, two in each directional orientation, four of which can be viewed at once, which could certainly be a coordinated campaign on a changeable copy advertising sign, approved within 300 feet, and taken together, any two of these would exceed the surface area limitations in the Bronx by the very same plan examiners subsequent to ours. If the purpose of this is to provide clarity, every other application is still being treated under the old standard, nor did DOB issue a PPN to anyone instructing them to look at this differently. It has always been, and seems to only be, our case that is treated differently. This is true of signs all over the city, all of which are treated the same way, all of which have always been treated the same way. And again, this is from the modern application. As you can see, each of these signs supports an individualized grid and doesn't share that grid with anyone else. I want to share a statistic that I think you guys will find bothersome. And I understand that signage is contentious, and these issues have come up for a long time, and I'll give this, I'll put this in the record momentarily. Our simple search on the BSA's website for the word "sign" in a decision yields different kinds of things, and this body is constituted to do two very different kinds of things. It hears interpretive appeals, and it grants variances in which it has wide discretion. And we think the standard that the cases quoted yesterday by the chair are relevant in variance cases without question, because those are subjective as opposed to objective interpretations. Our account showed, and again, this may be not perfect, because we don't have full record access, we showed 127 interpretive appeals that have been filed around signs over the last decade leading up to this case. And we divide those into three categories. There are vested rights cases, like, could you find a picture of this sign in Gone With the Wind or something? Could you prove it was there? There were jurisdictional cases, mostly revolving, involving the railroads, about whether MTA property was or was not subject to the regulation of this body or zoning generally. And then what we call pure interpretive appeals. So out of 127, 10 were MTA cases, and seven were vested rights cases, plus or minus. You got to 110 pure interpretive appeals. And I think you guys should be shocked at the statistic, because we were shocked when we actually did the statistics. Out of those cases, 89 were denied, 21 were withdrawn, and up until our case, and I don't know what has happened since, zero were granted. It never happened. That's challenging. These cases are complicated. We understand there's a lot of nuance here, and as the board articulated in its own statements, it's time for city planning to update this. But to punish us, and on a personal level, this is taking great stress on me and my family, we're not a big sign company. We thought, to be very candid, we're like, this is complicated, but we're as of right. We were surprised by how long this has gone and how far this has gone and the opposition to it. I learned a lot of lessons from this case about what as of right is or is not in view of city policy, which is challenging. And those are lessons that I'm certainly going to take with me, but whereas the saying goes, we're a little bit stuck here. We're here, we're in the ground, and we don't really have a choice. And so we appealed to this board to do what we believe is the right thing. We understand the public policy implications, but public policy is the purview maybe of a variance case, but not of an appeals case. The code doesn't say what DOB wants it to. It doesn't say what I know all of you want it to. As drafted, the zoning resolution allows this. And this statement by the chair yesterday, which I'm sensitive to, that it could have been 30,000 feet, you're right. We scaled back. Right? The fact of the matter is that this installation is contemplated as in a rare C7 zone. And as you pointed out in one of the previous hearings, and again, with great respect, whether or not it's intended, we don't know. City planning probably should have changed the zoning a long time ago. They rezoned the immediate area no less than three times in the last decade. They left the C7 here. And while the C7 might not be contextual for the district, I won't argue the merits of that, it contemplates an unlimited amount of signage. What other districts do? It's exceedingly rare to have no aggregate limits on signage. And the same way as this could never be repeated, and you could take that logic to mean we shouldn't allow it, it can never be repeated at any scale. It was a fluke of zoning, an accident of many, many city agencies, all misfiring, or whatever happened here, this zoning exists. And I implore the board to do what we believe is the right thing, which is to grant an as-of-right petition, and to let the relevant city agency make changes as appropriate, so that if they view this as improper policy, to change that policy. But we shouldn't be faulted for doing something that we believe is plainly as-of-right. And then I know Rick had a few more comments, and I apologize for the length of mine.
My client's a tough act to follow, but I just wanted to reiterate our view that the issue here is the grid as opposed to the separate structures. We think the plans here show that there's a separate sign on each separate structure, very similar to what's on 13th Street. We think that is what the board has decided, we think that's what the court has upheld as being appropriate, and we think that we respect the request that the board make a decision that's consistent with what was said in Barto I, so that by fitting into the criteria of Barto I, we have satisfied the board's concerns that were raised in that matter. I would like some time, obviously, I'm sure the board may have some questions, I would like some time to put it to further submission. There was a lot of ground covered, a lot of ground covered in your conversation at the review session, Chair Perlmutter. We would like some time to come back to you in writing on this.
Okay. So I just want, so you'll respond to the comments from yesterday, so we don't need to go through them and have a debate about them on...
Yes, we're going to go through that today. This is a complicated case, we understand.
Yeah, yes. So, but my question is, the subject of describing the sign not as back-to-back and parallel, does that mean now, instead of looking at a 9,000-square-foot sign, we're supposed to be looking at this as an 18,000-square-foot sign?
Well, no, I think we're supposed to be looking at this as 54 individual signs, which is our position, so...
Okay, 54 individual, well, before, it was presented to us as 27 signs, right? Because the board was under the review impression that they were back-to-back and parallel, right? So now we look at it as 54 totaling 18,000 square feet. Is that what we're being asked to do?
Yeah, I think that's what we're doing. I think the back-to-back rule does not apply here. And I think that, to the extent that that's been referred to either in court, by the court, or by Mr. Wallace in his statement, sort of got us away from, I think, one of the real points here, which is, you know, is the fact that each sign is on a separate grid, on a separate structure, the compelling factor in the board reaching its determination. And I appreciate the board's indulgence. It's been a lengthy hearing for this kind of matter, but as you said when we were here in March, that there's going to be a lot of work involved in this. So we'll do our best to accommodate the board.
Okay. Thank you. And obviously, right, that you will respond to all the other comments.
And I think Mr. Wallace is going to speak as well, so we may have a response.
Yes. Please.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Andrew Wallace, Assistant General Counsel representing New York City Department of Buildings. I did attend yesterday's executive session and also reviewed the video thereafter. I believe the only question that was directed to the department, directly to the department, concerned the application for the monopole. Did go back and check the monopole application. It was submitted by the applicant shortly after the board's decision last summer in Barto number one. And the application for the monopole, an alteration application, was reviewed under full plan examination, and it was approved. It is currently approved, but not permitted. At this point, the...
Oh, it was approved but not permitted?
Correct. It was approved by the, the plans have been approved by the department, but the permit has not been pulled by the applicant or issued by the department. So, at this point, the department affirms the approval of the monopole. And I think perhaps that's a good way, if I may, just to segue into the department's position. The monopole is, whole structure is not the problem here, and I think that's where most, we can have some agreement that there has been no controversy that the applicant could place some sign at this location. Where the controversy arises is, how many signs are they seeking to place? What is the composition of that sign? And then how do we measure that sign? Now, Chair was very extensive yesterday in her comments, and you also have the department's comments in the papers that we submitted in March. But just like to go over just the department's position again, if I may.
Take the mic, Mr. Wallace, please.
In Barto number one, we had 27 LED panels placed upon a grid attached to a monopole. In Barto number one, the department determined that this constituted one sign. That determination was affirmed by the board in Barto number one, and subsequently by the court in their, in the Article 78 decision. So with one sign, then the department looked to measure what is the surface area of that sign. And applying the zoning resolution definition of 1210, surface area would go to the extreme limits of the writing of the sign. With that, with that surface area measurement came to approximately, in fact, excess of 9,000 square feet. What that ran up against was the requirements of zoning resolution 32662, which limits the surface area of the sign to not exceed the linear distance from the arterial highway. So that, that decision was, the denial of the department was affirmed by the board, and the board's reasoning that this was, the board's reasoning that this rationale was supported by substantial evidence was affirmed by the court in the Article 78 decision. Turning to Barto number two, we have the same situation. We have the same arrangement. We have LED panels placed upon a grid attached to a monopole structure. It is one sign, not 27. One sign, and when we apply the zoning resolution 1210 measurement definition for surface area measurement, we're going to the extreme limits of the representation. And again, we have nine, in excess of 9,000 square feet, surface area, again violating zoning resolution 32662.
So, I'm not sure whether you would address this in terms of the issue of it being back-to-back in parallel. Is that something that you looked at?
In terms of back-to-back in parallel, I know there's been a lot of discussion about that today, and I can prepare a more detailed response. But from the department's perspective, we did our review based on the 27 panels, 27 panels, as you can see in the applicant's own representation, as being one sign. 27 panels as one sign, and... We have LED panels placed upon a grid attached to a monopole structure. It is one sign, not 27. One sign, and when we apply the zoning resolution 1210 measurement definition for surface area measurement, we're going to the extreme limits of the representation. And again, we have nine, in excess of 9,000 square feet surface area, again violating zoning resolution 32662.
So, I'm not sure whether you would address this in terms of the issue of it being back-to-back in parallel. Is that something that you looked at?
In terms of back-to-back in parallel, I know there's been a lot of discussion about that today, and I can prepare a more detailed response. But from the Department's perspective, we did our review based on the 27 panels, 27 panels, as you can see in the applicant's own representation, as being one sign. 27 panels is one sign, and considered to two signs on, you know, both faces of it. So 50...
So say that again, so you, so you were counting it once, or you were counting it twice?
We counted it once. 27 LED panels, over 9,000 square feet.
Okay, so in terms of what's been raised just now about the back-to-back in parallel, and the idea that it's a slightly off-parallel system, has the DOB taken a position on, when does it, you know, for instance, there's a second paragraph to it, and I'm, it says when a double-faced sign projects from the wall of a building, which is different, of course, and its two sides are located not more than 28 inches apart at the widest point, and not more than 18 inches at the narrowest point, then you only count one sign. So has that informed the Board's approach to these signs? I'm just curious if, you know, because you do see some of the examples that were shown...
Right.
Where the signs are kind of like this. I don't know whether they were considered one sign or two signs.
I'd have to review the examples that have been provided. But as far as, you know, BARTO number one and BARTO number two, the Department's analysis was based on the 27 panels attached to the grid comprising one, comprising one sign, and then measuring that at the extreme limits of representation exceeding 9,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have questions? Thank you.
I think there's some clarification on the question of the monopole and its permitting. I don't know sure whether it has much to do with, with, much to do with what's before us today. Again, I think that we have our own view, which differs from that of Department of Buildings with respect to the fact that it's, the support is not what you base your determination of the surface area or the extreme limit of the writing by. I think it's an error for DOB to have done that. I think we've said that a few times. And the statute also uses the specific language, as is highlighted here, within a single continuous perimeter. And it's our view that each individual panel has its own single continuous perimeter, which apparently isn't as easy to say as I thought it would be.
Michael, there's the applicant, just one more moment.
I don't want to make it seem as though this parallel of back-to-back construct is a red herring or taken on outsized importance. The reason I'm stressing it so much is that the judge's language in upholding this entire resolution, which we thought in BARTO 1 was flawed, of course, was she used the words that she copied the text of the words from paragraph two, said they are parallel and back-to-back, and therefore must be viewed as one. She applied that language, as did DOB, as instructive to the, maybe if I pull it up again, you'd see the judge's quote, "use that language to describe why the 27 were a single sign."
If I could just caution, I know you have a motion to reargue pending before the Supreme Court. We're not here to parse the language of the Article 78, Court. We want to be talking about BARTO 2 and how you believe that this installation is different.
And with regard to the permit issue, the reason that we haven't, quote, "pulled" the permit is because they put a requirement that prior, there's sort of three different statuses at DOB. There's plan examination, then approval, and permit. There are required items prior to each of those things. There's a required item prior to the issuance of a permit that you have to sign permits. So they've approved the zoning for the structure, but they won't issue a permit without the signs. That's a required item prior to permit.
Are you, did you install this monopole?
We have not yet installed the monopole.
Okay, so it's not up?
No, but it's not up. But the issue is that...
Is any part of the structure in place?
The foundations are all in.
So you were able to get a permit for the foundations?
We were. We have a single sign up at 209 feet, because they won't let you, a single 311-foot sign that's currently approved all the way to the top of the sign.
So you did build the...
No, we did, to be clear, you can't build a structure without a sign to put on it.
Right, I get that.
So it was totally not controversial that we could put a single 311-foot sign.
But you did build...
So there's no, same, there's no pole in place today. We have approval for a pole and a foundation for that. The sequence of this is actually, it's quite complicated to build one of these. So the foundation footer was installed. The pole itself has not been installed, nor have any signs.
Okay.
But you couldn't do anything on the site until you put a footer in, because of sort of order of operations, you're going to build a small retail establishment underneath it.
We know about footings. My question is, did you get a separate permit for the footings?
The footing, it's the same, it's the same underlying structure for which a permit for the footings was issued, but not for the actual pole itself yet, to be clear.
That wasn't so clear. What permit did you apply for the footings on?
We applied for a structural permit, which was approved. They wouldn't give the full permit for all of the signs, so we amended that.
Not for the signs?
For the structure.
I'm just talking about the structure.
We filed a structural application.
What permit did you...
Sure. I'll step back and try and make it more clear.
Yeah.
We filed a permit for a structure on which 54 signs would be placed.
Okay.
No one had any issue with the structure's zoning issues. Their issue was with the individual signs. And so we couldn't build anything at that time.
And the structure included monopole and the foundation?
Correct, the monopole and the foundation.
But you got the...
So we then filed a post-approval amendment, or I forget the exact term, as we filed a modified set of plans that had a single sign all the way up at the top of the pole, such that the foundation and the pole could be approved, so that we could install a foundation. So the approval that was granted was for the pole without these. Upon granting, we would have to put a post-approval amendment in to add all the outriggers and the signs, to be clear. So the foundation was installed correctly with permits for a single sign, one small sign. If that's more clear.
But you put in a, you put in a foundation that could support the weight of...
Correct. You put in the same foundation that would have supported, exactly right.
Okay.
Sorry that that was so complicated.
Okay.
Just in response to councils, obviously, we're not here to reargue what went on before Justice Ed Mead. That was just a matter of, for the facts. As a matter of fact, our argument here today is predicated upon our view that what we are doing is consistent with BARTO 1, whether we take issue with BARTO 1 or not.
Right, okay.
Let's do some dates, if we can.
So, no, I'd like to just a little bit more on this.
Sure.
So you're focusing, as I said in my comments, but you're focusing on whether or not this grid is a grid versus what, right? But there were many, many other findings in the resolution besides that. You need to address how you satisfy all the Board's findings, because the Board didn't make just one finding. It made eight, if I remember correctly.
And we intend to respond to those which you listed in your, in your conversation yesterday during the review session.
Okay. And then the other is, so, you know, I know that you're, I know that you're contesting the decision by the Court. However, for the moment, what the Court determines is law, which binds all of us.
That's my understanding as well.
So, yeah. So here we are, the BSA, a very lowly administrative body, way down below the level of the Supreme Court of the State of New York, right? So we are bound by determinations of the Court until directed otherwise by the Court.
Agreed.
So there we go. So we can't undo what the Court has said until the Court changes its mind.
And we agree with that. And I think our argument here today is that what we're doing is consistent with what you said in BARTO 1 and the...
No, that's what we said. The Court's added some more things. So the Court repeated some of the things that we said in our resolution, and then, then expanded on its own thinking. And that informs how the BSA makes its decision or its determination, because the Court guides us.
I understand that.
Right? And is doing its own bit of, or not more than its own bit, it is making its interpretation of the statute.
Far be it for us to suggest that the Board differ from what the Court wants.
Right, okay, just verifying, okay? Are there any speakers on this? No, okay. Anybody want to...
Just, this is not directly at Mr. Leland or even so much Mr. Davis, but other than that I know that there are land use counsel in the room. I have to note this, that you provide us images that portray the signs as parallel. And then when decisions reflect signs as parallel, you attack the decision as being flawed. And then the land use bar wonders why the city council wants to make their materials notarized and true under penalty of perjury. And this is why. This is why we have these conversations at city council, and we have images that then are misleading. And so, and I know that perhaps it wasn't the intent to mislead, but, and Mr. Leland wasn't even counsel on the previous, so I'm not casting, pointing fingers, I'm just saying that people need to be very careful about what they submit to the Board, because it does lead to decisions.
And in addition, you weren't there, but we talked about the signs being back-to-back in parallel.
Yes, that was...
Throughout the hearing, which was never corrected.
Yeah.
So...
It's really troubling.
And, you know, relied on text that says back-to-back in parallel, and if it wasn't relevant, then it should have been pointed out by counsel at the time, not that you were counsel at the time. Right, oh, but too, just because there was a little breather, I remember one of the things I wanted to ask. You said that you submitted to the tran, the tran, sorry, the...
Throughway Authority.
The throughway authority, materials that were, that gave the full sort of scope of the question. Can you submit those same materials to us, so...
Sure. And I actually think they were, most of them were appended to Mr. Wallace's submission with respect to that issue. They were the provisions of the state highway law, which dealt with this, the provisions of the agreement between the State Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration, the certification of New York City as being consistent with the Federal Highway Act, and the approval of that certification by the, we'll send a new set to you.
So you provided them with the materials that they ultimately provided to DOB, is that...
Well, I don't know, DOB may have obtained it on its own, but DOB provided it to you.
Right, okay, but so what I wanted to know is, did you actually explain to them what you were proposing to do in this location?
No, we fully spoke with them with respect to their jurisdiction, if any, over this application. Can I have one moment to confirm?
Yeah. Did you want to add something? No? No, that's okay. Okay. All right. Yeah, that's what he was consulting.
I'm done.
So how much time do you need? We obviously always need a lot of time to review, because it's a stack.
I understand that. Can we work backwards?
Sure. So working backwards, so Department of Buildings would submit, how many weeks after they submit, do you need? Two?
We have three.
Three. Well, yeah, normally it's two to respond, but if you're willing, I mean...
That's fine. I mean, I think we're probably going to need, Mr. Davis, it may depend on when the baby comes, but I think we could probably, we would probably need at least six weeks to do this.
Okay. So your submission, let's just say for argument's sake, would be July 26th. DOB's would be August 16th. Do you want a sir reply?
I believe so.
Okay. So then, you want two weeks for your sir reply?
That would be fine.
That would put you at August 30th?
If I, if I may, while I don't like to do that, I actually think I may be taking some time off in August, so I...
Okay, so you want to have your reply in September?
Yes, if I may.
So the second, so I'd say the second week in September, otherwise you're not taking much time off.
That's fine.
So September 13th for your sir reply? So we'll work backwards again, because it's not working out that way. So if you submit your sir reply in September 13th, that would be an October 3rd continued hearing. So, all right, so September 13th for the sir reply.
Okay.
One, two, so August 30th for DOB's submission?
August 16th.
August 30th for DOB's submission? Because they just take two weeks for the sir reply? And then...
I'm going to be, I know I'm going to be out on vacation on August 30th.
August 3rd, oh, okay.
Last two weeks of August, number one.
Oh, you are, so you, okay, so we can...
It's okay.
Whatever, everybody's on vacation at the same spot. All right, so we'll leave it alone. So August 16th for your submission? That just gives you more time to review on the airplane with the...
More time to think about it on the beach, I suppose.
Exactly. All right, so August 16th for DOB and July 26th for your submission, that's what I said.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, so one more time? So it's July 26th for Mr. Leland?
Uh, August 16th for DOB.
9:13 for sir reply, and October 3rd for the...
Continued hearing.
Continued hearing.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Item number 10, 20164332A, for Williams Court, Queens.
Yes. Sorry, a little distracted.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
That's okay. I think this is a good application to be distracted on, because I think this application has just got a heck of a lot simpler. The court of counsel opinion is, it's a street. I mean, the street's kept crummy, DOT, street's not right, the councilman, street's not right, call City Hall.
Right, call City Hall. So to that point, we actually did reach out to the Borough President, Queens Borough President, and thank you, God.
No, I never heard her response. I asked if they wanted to comment, considering that DOT is now identifying and identifying private streets for city ownership, but no one was...
I mean, this would seem like one that probably slipped through the cracks, nobody knew about now.
Yeah, I mean, we'll still, like, we'll stay in contact with them about these streets.
In general, yeah. It's kind of, you know, in Staten Island, the Borough President's taken a strong position on these things.
Oh, I've been to the meetings.
And so we're giving Queens the opportunity to...
There was a New York Times article on it a couple of weeks ago, saying that it's, you know, it's now citywide, so...
Right, so that's why we reached out.
I've been watching this spread.
Mm-hmm, yes.
It's like the Blob, it keeps going to different boroughs. There was a movie in the 70s called The Blob, that's what I was...
I know it well.
I didn't refer to the agency as a blob.
I even can quote lines from it, so...
Not even going to tell you.
So I think the court of counsel opinions, and then, I believe, your, in your office produced the meets and bounds description that clarified how the easements were. We're done with that, right?
Yes.
You guys did it, yeah.
Gave her a wonderful color-coded one last night.
Okay.
And Ms. Mathias is returning emails way too late on a weeknight.
I know, she does that.
They're not meant to be returned. We just send them, thinking the next day they'll be returned.
So, but in future, that would speed things up, if when you give us an easement, you give us, you track the meets and bounds, because...
We'll start doing that.
We try on our side, but we don't have the same kind of drawing basis. It's very difficult for us to...
No, we'll do it, we'll do it for you. And we're, you know, as you're going through these, each one, we see what you want, so we'll add that to it.
Right, okay. So that'll speed things up, if you just, when you hand us an easement, always track the meets and bounds on a map?
Yep.
And show us the document right there, telling you...
That way, yes, you could see it and track it, you don't have to match the words with anything.
Exactly. Because like I was in another neighborhood, you know? I didn't know where Saint Felix was, or anything.
Yes, healed.
Okay, so, I think, oh, so fire department, we still needed, so let's hear.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioner Anthony Scudero. First, I want to apologize to both the applicant and to the Board. The applicant had reached out to us in, like, May 1st. My notes indicate we responded, unfortunately, we didn't. So, please answer the question. Based on their request, we went back, we reviewed the required, fire department requirements. And in fact, they don't need to have no parking, they can, we agree that with the DOT decision, that parking on one side of the street would be acceptable, and so we have no objection to approval based on that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, everything's turning up roses for the Finmans today.
All right, so then, are there any speakers on this, besides that? Any other comments from the Board? Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Namanzinez?
Aye.
Commissioner Arthur Brown?
Aye.
Okay, and then, there's a restrictive declaration that needs to be...
No, no, no. In light of, well, wasn't the restrictive declaration to, to require the owner to maintain the street?
Yeah.
And if DOT... Oh, if it's a court of counsel, oh, oh, good point, okay. Good point, okay. So then, but we were going to have...
Good point, okay, so then, but the, we were going to have, or whatever, material methods, owner meeting, so the only thing, so a DOT therefore is going to, so the owner still, when they build, has to build the sidewalk and their, and.
Yeah, it's a subject to the builder's payment plan, yes, which would be the sidewalk and then halfway out into the roadway, they have to reinforce.
So that'd be a condition.
But that's a, yeah, that's a DOB complying to the builder's payment plan, to be expected.
So that, so we could have a condition that it complies with the BPP, which it has to do anyhow.
Right, right.
Okay, good, so on that motion, a motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanés?
Aye.
Commissioner Arthur Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much for all the time on this.
Thanks for being so responsive with crazy easements.
Yeah, it was a crazy one, thank you.
Zoning cal, oh, I'm sorry, do you want to keep going?
Yeah.
Zoning calendar, continued hearing items, item number 11, 22614BZ, 1470276th Road, Queens, we have an adjournment request on this?
Yeah, I lost my calendar.
My calendar, oh, thank you.
Scrunch up calendar. Okay, late July adjournment, so why don't we put that on for like August 15th or something like that?
Sure.
That's a cute one, right?
Yeah.
So August 15th with a submission on July 26th. Item number 12, 26314BZ, 1601 Oriental Boulevard, Brooklyn, we have an adjournment request? Right.
Hi, Eric Palatnik for an adjournment.
Right, so you didn't give any specific dates?
Yeah, we could submit the next, I apologize for that, we could submit the next couple of weeks, and if the board has time in June, that would be great, but I know your schedule's been very filled.
We don't.
If I can, if I could request July 25th is my favorite day in July.
Is it your favorite day in July, all right, have your favorite day in July, isn't that fine?
Yeah.
July 25th with a submission on July 5th?
Yeah, that's fine, we'll have it to you before then.
Okay.
So that's not a problem.
I'm sorry, do it again, I'm sorry, July 5th submission, July 25th continued.
Thank you.
Thank you, I apologize. Item number 13, 33014BZ, 1746 East 21st Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Meryl Olin from the office of Learl, we had somebody attend your executive session yesterday and watched the tape, first regarding proof of service, proof of notice to the neighbors, I confirmed with Tony Mathias yesterday that it was received by your board.
Yes.
For the community board, I spoke with them and had them resend the community board approval to your board as well, just to make sure in case it was lost in the pod.
No, actually, that one we did have.
We did, we had.
Oh, I know there was some debate, so I had it resend just in case.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, well, at least Tiffany's very nice over there. Regarding, it was a question yesterday about the attic, whether we included everything over five feet, and Commissioner Montanés, you were correct, we had not, we apologize, I have the new number, it is 573.63 square feet, they've already started amending the plans for me to reflect that, in addition.
Increases your FAR request to what?
It will increase our FAR request to, actually have it on the plan, 1.08. In addition, there was a comment regarding the maneuverability for the parking space, what the architect's proposing to do, and I will walk up just to show you, is to create a 45-degree angle in the corner of the kitchen.
Yeah. Just to cut the cham for the corner.
Well, I still feel that if you're maneuvering out, the car has to sort of like angle to the left.
We can also cut back a porch, if that would satisfy the.
You're restricted by the porch.
We can cut back the porch as well. I will make a note to do that as well. Okay, and by the way, I do apologize if the architect isn't here, I don't know if you recall from the last hearing, she was pregnant, she's incredibly pregnant at the moment. She is in her 37th week and was not feeling up to coming today, so, I apologize, but it was no lack of respect for you, as you see, she worked on a set of plans to make all the revisions to make it easy for you.
So is, is she a one-woman show, or does she have people in her office?
No, she's not, but she is the project manager on this, and she was really the only one prepared, but she thought she was going to feel up to it, but as of yesterday was.
No, but I mean, in terms of going forward, making.
Oh, no, there are other people that are going to have to take over this project from her, of course, because chances are by the next hearing, she is not going to be available, or at least not alone.
Right, she's welcome to come with company.
So, she'd love the company, streaming would be great. The other thing, there was a comment regarding the walls, what was being maintained, and if you look at the front walls, we're actually keeping 90% of the front wall on both the first and the second floor, the right side, the wall is being kept.
Wait, wait, slow down a second.
Sure.
I just got done.
I don't know if.
90% of the front wall.
Right, she calculated it's 90% of the front wall, she said, is being kept.
That's not what the drawings show, the drawings show, because there's that space that's still being retained as if there was a parking space on the left side.
Right.
Right.
And even the second floor cantilever's over it.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like why you're chopping out that part of the first floor.
Right, it used to be clear it was for a parking space, now there's no parking space.
Well, now they didn't increase it, truthfully, because they were concerned about the floor area, they didn't want to increase the floor area of the building, they thought it would be a problem, which is why they didn't add that space back in.
Well, I think the bigger problem is it goes to the believability that this isn't a total demo.
Well, if you look at this, we've got the front wall, we've also got, on the right side, the entire wall is being maintained on the first floor.
But that's not 90%, I mean.
We're talking about different walls, the front wall was 90%.
I see the, oh, front, 100%, 90% of the front wall, right, but.
Correct, 90% of the front wall on the first and second floors, on the right side, the entire wall on the first floor, the vast majority on the second floor, the exception being the removal of the bay window.
But, so, the other part of it is, all the joists are being removed on the first floor.
First floor, yes, second floor and attic, no.
Right, so, so when you remove joists, you remove floor area, right, when you remove walls, you remove floor area, so that's the part about the, what's still standing when all of that's removed, because you don't have anything to hold, you don't have, you don't have a first floor.
We have a second floor and an attic floor, though.
But they're keeping the.
We do have a second floor and an attic floor being maintained, we have the front wall being maintained, we have the sidewall being maintained, and we have a large percentage of the foundation being maintained, the vast majority of it, as a matter of fact. The reason they're doing this is to lower the first floor.
No, I understand that the idea is to, you're going to excavate the cellar and drop the first floor down.
Right, drop the cellar and drop the first floor, but they are maintaining two floors, so theoretically, there's floor area, because there's a wall in the front, there's a wall on the side, there's a ceiling to the second floor, and there's a floor to the second floor.
I think, well, that's.
Go ahead.
The other thing was that, you know, I'm concerned a little about the FAR request.
Yeah.
And I think before you were justifying it with the R7A.
Correct, we are adjacent to an R7A behind, to the right.
But, I think you have to leave it in the R32, and I think we had asked previously if there were any special permits in the R32.
Not on our block, on our block or on our social block, no.
So.
I would have presented those to your board, of course.
Generally, we don't grant like 1.08 or 1.09.
Right, understood, we do typically look at what else is going on around, and we are adjacent to a loading dock behind us for a community facility, we are adjacent to an R7A district, which is very unusual when you're in an R32, we have in the past gotten some higher FARs, we've been adjacent to other high-density districts typically behind, this is the first time I've had one where we're actually surrounded, it's very unusual for the R7A to surround the R32, which is exactly what's happening here, behind and to the right of the premises. That helps, I can show you this extra radius diagram.
According to the FAR map, the building next to the subject site, Lot 20.
Abnormally large.
Yeah, that has a 1.05 FAR, that was as of right?
I don't know, what I can tell you is, when I provide this information, I check for any violations, if there are any violations or stop work orders, I don't use the number because I don't think it's reliable, so I first look up the number, then I look for anything that shows me it's illegal, whether it's work without permit, anything I can find, I couldn't find anything showing me that there was a problem on that site.
But in the last hearing, we did say that the mass of the building wasn't in character with the neighborhood, and so the movement to take off a little bit of the back, like a gesture, almost, was, didn't bring it down enough, right, and then by, and because the attic wasn't included, therefore.
Some of the attic was included, in all fairness, it was a 200 square foot approximately discrepancy.
Okay, so, I mean, when I, I look at the floor plan on the second floor, I see there's room to play around with the depth, for example, by pulling the depth back, you'll be able to get to, you know, to 25 feet, which is the kind of compromise when you have no case really for having a two-story, 20-foot incursion in the rear, like, there hasn't been a case made that you can have a 20-foot incursion on the second floor, so we kind of compromise, even though we don't really have.
If I may, I just want to, you said that you see space to cut back, and I'd like to just understand where you're.
Yeah, I'm not going to design the interior, but.
Okay, I thought there was something in particular you were seeing.
I see excess opportunity, there's, you know, double height spaces, there's.
Actually, if you look, when you see double height space, I think this was unclear, and I said this to her yesterday, these X's mark that they're open above, they're taking advantage of ceiling, it's not open to below.
Yeah, no, I know.
So I want to make sure, because I don't think, I don't think it's very clear when I looked at it.
I mean, I see space, I'm not going to mention which ones, but I can tell that there's room for.
I mean, the bedrooms are 10 feet wide, just, or 10 feet in depth, front to back, that's a 10-foot span, actually 10 feet 5 inches to be exact.
Mm-hmm.
So they're, they're not particularly large bedrooms, I know it for some reason appears that way.
Well, that's also because they're not dimensioned, so we, there's no way for us to really tell, but I can tell by the planning.
It's 10 feet 5 inches in the rear.
There's generosity in the plans to, to take, to get another two feet, so at least you get.
So if we were to get to 25 feet, that would make your board.
I, I, that would be better for me, that at least you're responding to, and then that would reduce the floor area some, get us closer, be more responsive to the issues about mass.
And then, on the first floor plan, you had a mudroom, which was, I believe, on the left-hand side of the building, because you were going to have the parking space there, now you have this side door, which I suspect will be very little used, and I don't even see the steps to get up into the mudroom, but it seems to me that that mudroom is in a poor location at this point, and, you know, there, there's room for rearrangement and reduction on the first floor depth, and it would help with the parking maneuverability also.
So you're talking about the rear, at the rear?
Yeah.
Okay.
That mudroom, to me, especially with the side door.
I see, I see exactly what you're saying.
And there's no steps into the, and it's not, it's, you know.
I mean, it's one step in, what it looks like here, which I see the front is three steps, so I can see why you're asking the question.
Yeah.
You got three steps in the front, two steps in the back, and one step into the mudroom, which is in the middle.
Just one step up?
Well, no, I, I see what you're saying, is my point.
Yes.
That you're, there's three steps to get to the first floor in the front of the building, two steps in the rear of the building, how could it be one step in the middle of the building?
Yes.
I see your point, I will speak to the architect about that.
But your ultimate goal relative to the mudroom is?
Um, I, I just kind of feel that it's not in the proper location.
Oh, because, oh, because it's so hard to get there and.
Before, it was like you had the car, you know, the parking space.
You came right out.
And you would bring everything into the mudroom, take off your boots and your coat.
Right.
But you don't have the parking space there anymore, now it's on the other side of the house.
I'm not sure what that will do to help, since there, stairs are there.
No, but in addition to which, you're really far away from the car and the kitchen, you really want to come in through the kitchen when you park your car.
When you get your groceries and you park your car.
I see exactly what you're looking at, I don't disagree that you'd probably want to come in there, I'm not sure how that helps with the floor area, though, because the stairs are there.
It might not help with the floor area, but you might end up switching, she, the architect might end up switching functions somehow.
You could put the bathroom in the mudroom, you know, it's.
Yeah.
And then, like, move things back, and, the mudroom is rather large, and the foyer is very large.
You could move the den and the kitchen back then a little bit, and then.
Yes.
And slip.
I don't believe we had a problem on the first floor with the 20 feet, am I correct?
No, that's not the issue.
I was going to say, I thought we were fine on the first floor with the 20 feet, it was the second floor that's disgusting.
But I'm thinking, you know, you have this sort of bump on the side, right, that is part of the side yard incursion, if you don't need that incursion on the side yard, and you're actually wanting to put the mudroom on the other side, that could eliminate some floor area from, say, that staircase that goes. Well, that's the cellar stair, right? That stair goes to the cellar.
No, it goes up and down.
That's the upstairs and the cellar stair.
Boom.
Yeah, right.
I don't know what that goes to the second floor, that messes you up.
It goes.
Yeah.
The stairwell goes throughout the whole building.
Not sure, yeah, so that doesn't help your.
Yeah, as I said, I'm not sure what that accomplishes dealing with the mudroom, it might be an internal change.
But she's definitely going to want to change it ultimately, so obviously you don't want to have the changes too much, otherwise DOB might.
No, always better to get it changed and finished here, I agree, I understand your point regarding the mudroom.
Mm-hmm.
I think that might have been an oversight, and I will point that out to them without a doubt.
The fast turnaround is always the issue.
Okay, all right, are there any speakers on this?
Okay, so, what can we say, so it's another person in the office who's going to be working on it, right?
Uh, her boss is actually going to have to take over.
Okay, so.
I'm sure he's quite qualified, as a matter of fact, I know he is, you've, you've seen him before.
Um.
Is there any way we can be put on June 20th, assuming we make the change to 25 feet on the second floor?
I'm looking at the 27th, 20th, no, 27?
You can do 27.
No chance at the 20th?
No, why, does that have something to do, it's just like an insane calendar.
Yeah.
Okay, no, because I, what I'm looking at is if we make these changes, there really shouldn't be much of a discussion, which is why I'm asking, and I'm already going to be here on the 20th.
It's an insane calendar, and it sounds like nothing, but we actually have to look at the review.
No, of course.
At work, so.
That's, that's why I, I have to ask, though, since I'm already going to be here.
Okay, we're already making it a little difficult for ourselves by adding a June 27, so, unless you prefer it to be later in terms of your schedule.
Oh, no.
Okay, so June 27, or the submission June 7. Item number four, I'm sorry, and, are we done? Sorry. Yeah, so, you know what I wanted to say is.
She's ready to go.
Alert, alert your, whoever the architect is, to just be on standby in case.
Of course, well, we had originally had Renee on standby, we didn't anticipate that she would not be feeling up to it today, she still had theoretically three weeks left.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Now, item number 14, 4-15BZ, 119 Webster Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Amanda Iannotti, on behalf of the applicant, we requested an adjournment, we need another lengthy adjournment, still trying to obtain a approved CCD one from the Department of Buildings regarding egress, I think two, two more months should be good.
Why is it taking so long? Why is it taking so long?
Well, we actually had two denied, and they're denied on multiple other reasons, and I'm not getting a clear answer on whether we can have egress through one of the classrooms to the stairwell in the side yard, and so we can remove the one in the front yard. So, we've had, uh, I'm sorry.
Just curious, have you given them a copy of the other? You know, we had another school...
Yes. That one is under the 2014 code, and there's a clear exception and clear language, which we're under the 68 code, and, and we don't have that similar language. We have provided that precedent, but we're not under that same code. The only thing we're resting on is that there's a, a part of the 68 code where, um, you cannot exit through occupied room if there's multiple tenants. We are one tenant, and that's where we're resting. And unfortunately, on both CCDs that we've submitted, they've denied on other reasons, which we are addressing. We're enlarging the interior stair, and I, and I haven't gotten a clear approval or denial on that one singular issue.
Okay. All right, so you think, you think two months is really enough? Maybe let's make it three, right?
Okay.
Right?
Uh, all right.
I mean, I don't know where you started this...
If we did August 22nd, that would give me a submission on August 2nd. That would give me two full months.
Yeah. That's fine.
Okay.
So, are there any... Oh, this isn't adjourned, sorry. Um, so, yeah, so, August 22nd for continued and August 2nd for submission. But really, since we're just waiting for that, right? No, you need to modify the drawings to show...
We're waiting for that, and that's kind of the gating item for the whole proposal.
Yeah. Okay, and then the drawings need to be modified and submitted showing the relocation of the staircase. Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. We have that, then, the date?
Thank you.
Yes, you got it. Item number 15, 258 15 B.C., 2619 East 16th Street, Brooklyn.
Hello, good morning or good afternoon. Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and we heard your board's comments. And we know we could do a better job communicating things to you better, because I think that what you're concerned about, and you expressed your discontent with yesterday, is really just a lack of us communicating as clearly as we can how the program is going to work. Because I, and I think we could read, solve it very easily by providing for you a study of the parking, of the, uh, the, the patient trips to the doctor's office at Kings Plaza. Because that is really, and I think we got sidetracked at the last hearing when all the new information came out. We talked about the doctor's office at East 14th Street. And Madam Chair, you had the idea, give us real data, go to right to East 14th Street, do a survey. And I think Hiram and, and our office missed the real nexus here. And the real nexus is, is Kings Plaza. And let me explain why. It's the whole philosophy of everything, and then we can come back into all of your discussion points of everything you raised yesterday. But the philosophy of everything is really very simple. The doctor now has three locations, but not all three locations are analogous in what they do. You've got this East 14th existing business where he's got his medical office, where everybody goes to see the doctor at. They've got oncologists, urologists, all these ologists there. They're specialized. There's four doctors, four practices that practice out of there. There's a couple of doctors in each practice, just like you and I. We go to doctor's offices. There's 12 doctors up on the door whenever I go in, on the door. You know, there's always one doctor in there. They have, you know, it's that kind of setup. And he's there, operating at 14th Street. Unfortunately, for some of his patients, when they're there, they get diagnosed with cancer. That's not good. They get diagnosed with cancer, and they have to go get tested in radiation treatment. That's what we're trying to bring over to the 16th Street location. That's currently going on at Kings Plaza. So, God forbid, I go to him and I get diagnosed. I'm then making three or four trips a week for the next two months on my chemotherapy to Kings Plaza. But to make it even worse for me, I have to check in with my doctor twice a week. Well, the doctor's at East 14th Street, because Kings Plaza is just the radiologist, just the, the, the chemotherapy. So, Kings Plaza, which the doctor will tell you up and down, and his wife is here, she's the office manager. She's ran his business or their business for, since they started. And, and she could tell you, Kings Plaza, and, and Hiram is going to give you a traffic count on it, a, a, a survey of it. He'll show you, 20 people come a day to Kings Plaza. And of course, it makes sense, you can only get 20 people, because, God forbid, if you've ever been anywhere, I mean, it gets chemo, it's not exactly like getting a, anything removed, a small little procedure. You're there, you stop four or five hours, you sit there all day, you sit.
And you don't necessarily drive yourself.
You don't necessarily drive yourself. Some of the people do. The Reikmanns, as the Reikmanns will tell you, some people do. Some people have other people drive them. They're very emotionally distraught, they're upset, obviously. They're, they're going to the doctor weekly for, to talk to the doctor. And some of the trips are linked to the doctor, because these people are already, that are going over to Kings Plaza, are already going twice a week already to 14th Street. So, the numbers that Hiram gave you for the 14th Street include the patients that are checking in with their doctors twice a week after they get their chemo over at Kings Plaza. They got to come back and talk to the doctor and see how they're progressing twice a week, or whatever the appointment schedule may be, depending upon their, their treatment. So, I think what we didn't do right for you, and the reason why you've got so much confusion and frustration on your side, is after the last hearing, we, we focused on 14th Street. We, and after I saw your notes last night, and we were all talking and going through this late into the, into the evening last night, I realized that we didn't make the connection for you to, to Kings Plaza. So, we're going to, we're going to analyze Kings Plaza, and then, and Mrs. Reikman is here today, and she's going to testify for a minute just to talk to you about Kings Plaza and the activity that goes on there. And we're going to, we're going to survey that. We encourage you to stop by that if you want, just so you could see the validity of what we're talking about and everything. You know, we'll give you, you have the address in your paperwork. Uh, you could stop by and see what we're talking about. But the idea, I think, the credibility issue, I think, that I'm hearing from you is you're saying you're doubling the medical space, but yet you're telling me you're not bringing all these people here. Well, I probably, I might double, I might bring all these people here if I opened up Shampa Chanda's medical office there, and, and Commissioner Chanda all of a sudden was a doctor, I mean, she might be already, and she has, from scratch, starting off her, her dermatology office. And if it was a dermatology office, like Becca Kelly, who's married a dermatologist, I think, used to be the, the attorney here, if I was her husband, the dermatologist, I'd be seeing a lot of people in this space. Because when you go to a dermatologist, I don't know if you've been going to a dermatologist. Oh, I've been going, because I get all these speckles all over. So, I get, I get red, I get... Yeah, they are crazy. I mean, you're in there at 8:00 in the morning, and there's like 40 people there already. They got traffic people in the parking lot just for like a... So, that's, but that's not the scenario here. And I could see how you being presented with what we gave you, you can't distinguish that. So, we're going to go back, and we're going to study the other locations to show you that. Having said all that, I think I've said my piece that I wanted to communicate to you. I'd be happy to, uh, the doctor's wife, or, uh, Mrs. Reikman, she's more than the doctor's wife, she runs the whole operation. She's a very talented and a successful businesswoman in her own right. So, I'll let her speak to the operation.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Thank you very much for...
I'm sorry, state your name for the record?
Of course. It's Elena Reikman. Thank you for giving me a chance to, uh, speak with you. Uh, I would like to maybe simplify this as much as possible, because I think that everyone really got caught up with so many details and, uh, policies and parking service. And I think that we made this case actually much more difficult than it really is. Uh, right now, we have a practice, a busy practice on East 16th Street on Sheep's Head Bay. Uh, there is a, a, a management office that's on East 14th Street, and that's the building in question that we would like to rebuild. Uh, there's also another facility on Kings Plaza.
You got it backwards.
She's got it backwards?
Oh.
Okay.
East 14th.
The medical office on 14th.
The medical office is on East 14th.
Right.
And the management is on East...
You said the opposite.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you for catching that.
I, I was cautious to correct her on her own business.
Yes. No, no, no. I get confused all the time.
I was about to correct, but I took the notes from you.
No, 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 no. East 14th is the practice, and the 16th is the management office. Yes, and, uh, we also have a facility on Kings Pla, on Kings Plaza, or near Kings Plaza, and that's where people come in, as Eric explained, with, uh, a cancer diagnosis to get their treatments.
What's... It's both radiology and chemotherapy there?
That's, that's a radiation, radiation radiology center. Mm-hmm. Um, that's, that's all that facility does.
Okay.
So, um, with that being said, we would like to consolidate the Kings Plaza, Kings Plaza facility, and, uh, give more space to the people that we have in the management office. And that would all go into the East 16th facility, the 2619 East 16th Street. So, in reality, what would, uh, what that building would host is it would have existing management people. So, everyone from billing and, uh, collections, accounting, IT, everyone who is there right now. So, there's no one new that we are, uh, planning on hiring in that facility. And that would occupy some of the building. And the rest would be given to approximately 20, or, I, I should say, up to 20 patients per day, because you cannot fit any more patients for those types of treatments, uh, into that facility. And the rest of the space would be used for numerous compliance, uh, meetings that we have for the staff. Right now, the staff has to come in, uh, multiple times in different groups just to get their training. We have OSHA, we have HIPAA, uh, we have CPR training, and we have a lot of compliance, uh, training and, and meetings that we have to do. Right now, we have no space to do that at all. So, we either bring people in in groups, or we have to rent out a space elsewhere.
Okay. So, it could just, so the 20 patients who would come per day are for radiology again?
Correct.
Not, their chemotherapy's not part of your...
Radiation radiology, yes.
Yeah, okay.
For cancer treatments, yes.
Right. Um, and, and then, so that's something we haven't heard, I don't think, before, about compliance meetings for the staff?
No, no, I've mentioned, we just said that, uh, staff assessments and evaluations. I'm just explaining what they are. I've explained, uh, last time, and so, yeah.
So, you don't expect to increase the business size? No?
On the, we're trying to consolidate it into one location.
But I mean, the, the billing office people, you don't intend to hire more people?
Right now, the practice is at capacity. That's where we'd like to keep it.
And it's in the existing building, so however they're getting to work, it's already involved in the parking.
Everyone who's there is already there. Yeah, majority of people's been working with us for over 10 people, and that's who we intend to keep, yes.
And so, the staff who comes for the compliance meetings or, or evaluations?
Yes.
They're going to then walk over from the 14th Street?
From East 14th.
Because there's no reason to drive a car for two blocks, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, they're already, if they're coming from 14th Street, then they're, they're already parked wherever they're parked, right?
Yes.
And the 16th Street people who are on-site will also come to the meetings, but they're already there?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
And there's nobody else coming, other than maybe an OSHA expert or somebody like that, right?
Right, you, yeah, yeah.
But you will be transferring this, the Kings Highway staff to this location?
So, that, well, uh, the Kings Plaza staff, yes. The Kings Plaza staff is one doctor, one receptionist, and it would be either a physicist or an assistant, depends on the day. And that's it. So, uh, the staff is very minimal there. And, uh, the receptionist, a lot of the times, goes back and forth to Sheep's Head Bay office anyway.
Where's the Sheep's Head?
Uh, the East 14th.
East 14th Street, sorry.
Yeah, the East 14th.
Okay, so it actually might even be double, a person who works in both locations working there?
Correct.
So, the, so the sort of, the delta on staff increase is kind of like two, right? Or not e, I mean, on this side, it's not actually anyone, is it? So...
The delta...
The delta on the increase...
It's four, four more people. It's everybody in the radiology division that are going to be working the radiology machine.
Okay.
So, it'd be four staff and 20 people, that would be the increase?
Correct. But the 20 are already there, and they're working already.
No, 20...
20 patients.
The 20 patients, yes, correct.
20 patients.
Forty plus the 20.
So, the day you go for radiation treatment, you also go to the doctor to get...
Twice a week, uh, they check in with, uh, the doctor on East 14th Street. So, it would actually be so much better for these patients who are local anyway to just, uh, go to the doctor and then go to the...
So, they do that on the same days? First, they go to the doctor, and then they go to Kings Plaza for the radiation?
Yes.
And on that note, and what we will call out also in our papers, is those people right now are already coming already to 14th Street to check in with the doctor, and then they go to Kings Plaza for the treatment.
So, that's a link, totally a link trip.
It's, yeah, that's a link trip. Once they park at 14th, they go see the doctor. They're on foot, this is two blocks away. Presumably, they'll just walk the two blocks to...
So, you're saying the total increase is going to be four people?
Yeah. Four people, even three people, because one person a lot of the times goes between the offices and, uh...
Is four staff?
Four staff.
And the 20 patients are a link trip to the 14th Street site?
Because you don't walk in off the street, no?
Not, not all of the 20 patients are link trips. Because, remember, God forbid, I get diagnosed with, with cancer, and I'm going for treatment. I'm just seeing the doctor a couple of times a week. I'm going for the treatment multiple times a week. So, just because I'm going for treatment doesn't mean I'm seeing the doctor. But there's a good chance when I'm seeing the doctor, that the day I'm also going for treatment. And hopefully, none of us ever have to actually do that.
And, uh, I just want to say that we are not, uh, you know, we're not expecting, and we can't even expect, to see new patients at the, uh, East 16th office, just because you don't walk in off the street and ask for radiation treatment.
No.
And these are all existing patients, so these are not... And, uh, most of these people, I mean, overwhelming majority actually live right in the neighborhood. Um, so, it's much, much easier for them to get into that location, because they've been going to the doctor already anyway to that place. So, it actually puts an extra stress for those people to go outside of the area and, and travel further into the Kings Plaza.
And Kings Plaza is located how far, driving distance?
It's close. We submitted a map, you'll find it.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
But it's close. But it's close.
About fifteen minutes, yeah, belt parkway without traffic.
Okay.
So, it's like forty-five minutes on a normal day.
That's true.
That was a belt parkway joke. See, the chairs traveled to belt parkway.
Oh, yes, I've seen that map. Okay. All right, so then, that completely changes the traffic analysis.
Yes.
Parking analysis.
The parking analysis.
Traffic slash parking, the whole...
We're gonna, we're gonna, we gave you already what would have been a very conservative estimate if it was a new doctor not taking in these conditions.
Because the, the point that we were talking about yesterday, which may, was making at least Commissioner Otley-Brown and I very uncomfortable, was you were showing a demand for thirteen spaces and then saying you were gonna get it waived. So, this is looking like, I don't know what the demand would actually be.
We ran the numbers last night, I don't have any of the stats viewed, but I had the engineer run them when we were on the call, and he worked overnight. Brings it down to two.
Okay, so that's what I mean, so we don't, so when we're waiving two, when you're waiving two with DOB, that's...
I saw your concern, that's, we were, it's what triggered me to figure out what link we weren't providing to you that you weren't seeing, because to us it was clear, but it wasn't to you, and I apologize, it was our mistake, we should've made it a lot more clear.
And on the plans, you see that it's a radiation vault with an MRI, so it's actually, it can't be...
Yeah, you saw that, we called that out. It's the double height space in the back, it's about twenty-five hundred square feet of floor.
But not, I mean, I've seen radiation, or let's say I've seen chemo banks where it's like tons and tons of people who unfortunately are all like seating like that, you know? So, I couldn't tell whether you had fifty people come for chemo or...
Radiation is fifteen to thirty minutes per patient, and you add a little bit more time between, you know, changing patients, but basically, realistically, realistically, you can't accommodate more than twenty people. I mean, at times, it's as little as six people, but just stating the most conservative scenario.
So, I think...
It depends, obviously, it's not like every time twenty people come in. I mean, sometimes you have twenty, sometimes, like I said, you have six.
Six, so that's your worst case.
Yeah.
So, that should make it clear also, your write-up should say the worst-case scenario is twenty.
Twenty.
And current operations, maybe you could give an average, you know? Current operations, we see between five and twenty. Yeah, something like that, whatever.
We will.
Okay, great.
I had a question about the parking study, well, not for you, but, I'm sorry, but, um... I had a question about the data for the staff and the assumptions that you made, that the modal split for the staff was the same as for the patients, and the vehicle occupancy was the same for the staff as for the patients. And I didn't see where you came up with that conclusion.
I'll, I'll...
Because, you know, you use, you use the same modal split and the same data for the staff of thirty, forty-two percent auto share, and the same occupancy, which was one point eight seven persons per vehicle, but I think the staff and the patients will be very different.
Slightly different, yes.
Well, they don't come by amulet.
No, I understand.
Staff doesn't, I mean, I would think the staff is gonna be closer to the office.
Correct.
So, the modal split, the auto occupancy rate is much lower, and you'd have a lot more cars, vehicles.
And we also, when I was looking at the parking study, the on-street parking study, I was having trouble making sense of the chart versus the maps. So, for me, the easiest would be if on each map, it says, what's your total count between those hours, nine AM, ten AM, that kind of thing? What's the total availability on, on the map?
Easier for you, yes.
Yeah, well, you could do it by hand.
I understand, thank you.
Just write the answer, right?
That's fun.
And everybody gets all worked up that they need to do it on a computer, it doesn't have to be done by a computer.
I would, I would like to, because there were some comments yesterday from the board, to know that we, we looked at this as a totally new medical facility. So, we added, we added in, you know, all the trips, new staff, new patients, on top of what's already existing. So...
Right.
Our conditions out there for parking already took into account all the parking that's taken place in, in the neighborhood, because I think the board had, was unclear whether, whether we did that or not. So, what we, we were attempting to do is give you a worst-case scenario to show that a totally new facility would be thirteen spaces.
Right, so that didn't end up being a good answer?
That's correct, well, it did take into the synergy of, of...
Right.
What, what actually is taking place.
Right, because you know that we've been consistently saying, if you show a demand of X spaces, you need to provide for the X spaces, right?
I understand, yes.
So, if you're interpreting the data in a way that's leading you to a conclusion that's not related to the, to the reality of the site, that's not working towards the surface of the goal, right? But, but in turn, and so just to go back to the parking, on-street parking survey, then the, if each map says what's available per hour on, on-street, then when you do a chart that, and that you don't necessarily even need a chart, but when you do a chart, you should be picking up that number and running the number as opposed to turning it into a percentage, because you don't need to use percentages, you could be using brute, brute numbers. Okay.
Understood.
Okay. What else? Do we have anything else? Oh, yeah, so there were other, two other questions, but not for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We also had, we had two other questions that had to do with DOB, your...
The scissors stairs.
Yeah, one was about the staircase, the other one was about Appendix G.
We're gonna submit something and write the architect, we spoke to the architect yesterday, we didn't get something to present to you, but the architect is of the belief that it's permitted and had a very lengthy explanation for us. We'd like to give that to you, perhaps we'll give it to you before we even submit, to give to your examiners.
That there's only one stair required?
Yes.
Okay, so if, just site to the code, et cetera?
Yeah, they were pretty confident, and we went through it, Jessica spent a lot of time on the phone with them yesterday, I wasn't on the call, but we just don't have it written up.
Okay. And then the other was about Appendix G compliance?
Yeah, and we spoke to them about that.
That will be reviewed by DOB and...
Yeah, we're gonna add a note to the pines, right?
And that they will review for the dry floodproofing.
Yes. The architect is a very local architect, Igor Zavuzki, he's quite familiar with all the flood, playing regulations, so trust is working very well.
Good. Okay, so, are there any speakers on this? So, we're at, Mr. July...
July twenty-fifth are still available.
I...
Trying to limit the trips back from an island that I spent some time on over the summer and group everything together.
July twenty-fifth is fine, with a submission on July fifth. He said you're gonna submit sooner.
We'll have it to you before July fifth, for you to review and look at and to speak with your examiner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Item number sixteen, twenty sixteen forty-two twenty-nine BZ, one fourteen fifty-two Drum Wood Road, Staten Island.
Hello again, Eric Palatnik. No traffic study.
Okay. Okay, I think, yeah, so we looked at this, and I think everyone agreed, you're, thank you for being so responsive to the concerns about the merger and what the potential effect on uniqueness was. So, does anybody have any remaining comments, questions? Are there any speakers on this? I'd like to therefore make a motion to close. Chair from letter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
I'm sorry, is there, is there a condition that DOT asked about site plans on this? I have a note.
Sorry, what?
That DOT was asking to, if there are any changes to the site plan, that they would have concurrent review, but...
DOT?
Yeah. The resolution, right?
But I mean, we should, if it hasn't been talked about here...
It should be a, it should be conditioned to grant. Condition, so what was it they wanted?
I don't have those files for nothing.
So, I have a note from the March twentieth review session that DOT asked that they approve any changes to the site.
New York State DOT, this is.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, they also needed to waive an easement?
No, I think the easement has been, the easement's extinguished years ago, I think we referenced it in our papers.
But there were two.
Yeah, yeah.
We did already, sorry. Sorry. It was, I was more about the imposition of a condition than I was asking.
Yeah, yeah. So, I don't have that note about DOT, so it's New York State DOT?
It's in the second letter from DOT, I don't have it for nothing.
Okay.
It's in the second letter.
Does anybody see that on the...
Well, there was a thirty-foot grading easement, and they owned one foot of the front of the property.
DOT does.
Right, but then we had a letter of no objection.
They got a letter saying that the thirty-foot grading easement was waived.
And there was a letter of no objection, I think, on the one foot.
I don't recall that.
Okay.
Is that, you're a recollection?
So, how about just a condition that it comply with DOT, New York State DOT requirements?
Requirements.
And that, which it has to do anyway? And we don't regulate New York State DOT, right?
No.
Okay, all right, so, then, a motion to grant on condition that the, that the project comply with DOT requirements. Chair from letter?
New York State DOT.
Sorry. Chair from letter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seventeen, twenty sixteen forty-two sixty-six BZ, three thirty, East Fifty-Nine Street, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, to respond to the several questions raised, I have Izzy Levy, who is the principal of the PCE, to address the, how the other commercial tenants in the building were notified.
Good afternoon. For the record, Izzy Levy.
State your name again?
Izzy Levy, L-E-V-Y. Okay, so we hand-delivered the notice to every tenant in the building, it's a commercial space, I believe there's eight floors, with one tenant per floor, and I was hand-delivered to them along with my business card, and we haven't gotten any complaints or any phone calls. We are on the ground floor, so if we had any issues, they walk by our space daily.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify for the record, the entire package was given to them. The notification, our letter, the objection or consent sheet, the entire package of notification.
Okay, great.
You had mentioned Department of Investigation, I would note that this is the same principal and the same people who were included on the DOI form that was previously submitted last year for another PCE at ninety-three Worth Street. So, nothing's changed since then, so I don't know the status of that at this point.
Yeah, we have it, oh, we do have it, okay.
Okay.
Sorry, sometimes it's just a little slow in getting back.
And then, the, the Criterion Acoustics Report, which we submitted to you, every one of those recommendations, and including the operational recommendations about sound and limiters, were adopted, and were built according to their specifications, and the operational guidelines have been adopted in the space.
And then the Fire Department wanted verification that the sprinklers and smoke detectors were aligned, realigned to accommodate the changes in the wall layouts?
I don't...
So, I, I believe you had changes in the interior partitions, or, or there were changes in the interior partitions that might have affected the location of the sprinklers and smoke detectors, do you wanna comment?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'd like to schedule, when, when I issued the, the letter, basically, I just, it's a, an existing PCE that's been taken over, it's under new ownership, and, and I think, I don't have the letter in front of me, what I had said is that if there was any renovations and any change of floor plan, you know, I would like confirmation that the engineering was done. So, if they've not done any renovations, then I have no issues, because I know that there is an existing alarm and sprinkler system.
Right.
So, they would just need to confirm that they've not added spaces or removed spaces or reconfigured.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
The same configuration in the space has been kept, and the only changes that are made are basically cosmetic and of course, the acoustical changes.
Okay. All right.
And then the wrapping of the columns and the testing, again, I'll introduce Izzy Levy, the principal. We submitted information and architectural drawings to show that the columns were boxed in and not connected to the columns itself, separated deliberately, and that there was tile on the outside of the wood, and Izzy Levy?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is that it's fully detached from the column, so even if, in the rare occurrence that a ball is thrown up against the column, it wouldn't touch the, the beams.
Right.
Oh, yeah, and we, we did test it, like you requested last time, we threw the ball up against all the individual columns, we had people standing on the floor right above it, no noise nor vibration was heard or felt.
Okay, so you didn't do this with Criterion where they use monitors, right?
Correct.
You did not?
We, correct, we did not. Yeah, we were, we stood in front of this council with our other PCE at ninety-three Worth Street, it's the same that we had there, and we haven't had any issues there as well.
Okay. All right. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, does anybody have any concerns about the testing or anything like that? Okay, so what I'd like to recommend, so that we don't have to delay this further, is that the Criterion recommendations be shown on the resolution, so, because we had said put them on the plans, but then we'd have to delay the decision. Okay, so then, I would like to recommend, make a motion to close. Chair from letter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Sorry. Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
And then, make a motion to grant on, on condition and with the reference in the resolution, that the recommendations made by the Criterion sound engineers are complied with, and show those recommendations on the resolution, so it's clear to the Department of Buildings what they are, okay? Okay, so on that motion, a motion to grant. Chair from letter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number eighteen, twenty sixteen forty-two seventy-seven BZ, seventy-nine oh-four, one hundred fifty-first Avenue, Cleveland.
Good afternoon. I'm Melanie Myers, with Fried Frank Harris Schreiber and Jacobson, representing the applicant, which is Con Edison. We've made a request for a deferral, and I think, you know, that we can be, to provide plans showing many of the things we agreed to. I did wanna talk just for a minute, because I know there was one question about the enclosure, and I wanted to make sure, because we do wanna make sure that we're as responsive as possible in our next submission, that we sort of understand the questions. You know, Con Edison, the, the question had been whether or not there was a way of enclosing the individual elements of the battery facility, and I think that there was, there's a series of concerns that Con Edison has, I just wanna state them, and then we can provide the elaboration in our response. So, the, the first one that they expressed concern about is, you know, access to the facility, there's a limited amount of space within the wall that's being created, and while the battery facilities will be mostly inert while it's moving forward, if there is a need to switch out the batteries, if there is a need to make repairs, there's